Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the April 3rd Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I have the honor of introducing Reverend Tom Wilson if he will come forward for identification. Reverend Wilson, good to see you as always.
Thank you. Thank you. This is my 20th year in Dare County, so I'm just, I'm almost at home here.
All right.
So we give thanks. Let us, for this moment, just be still and listen to the power greater than ourselves, and ask that we can participate in this action of American democracy where we listen to each other and the different views, and we honor one another. We come here to honor our employees, the county employees, and we honor their service, and we give thanks for that. We also today remember the protection of children. Children, the leading cause of death in young children is guns and our worship of weapons of mass destruction. Lead us away from this, we pray. We're going to be talking about housing. Open our hearts and our minds and our memories, so we can remember that those who work in this county but cannot afford to have a home here, we give thanks for the work of these commissioners, and ask that you open our eyes, that we might walk in the way of justice and peace. This we ask. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Wilson. May we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Couple of things before we move forward. There's overflow in 168, if you'd like to go over there. We may have certainly some seats open after item two and three. Usually those folks will go outside and have a photo taken, so we'll probably have some, those of you that are standing now will probably have an opportunity to be able to be seated here. I would like to remind everyone that Commissioner Tobin, once again, is not able to be with us this evening. I would ask that you would continue to keep he and his wife in your thoughts. And Sid, County Manager.
Chairman, just some housekeeping.
But one housekeeping item. In fairness to a couple of folks that are here for proclamations and the tourism board and a broadband update, I'm going to suggest to the board that we move items five, six, seven, and eight, and then before item four. That way, once we get into public comment, we won't have any interruptions. We can just keep on going through this evening. So I asked the board if I could do that.
So moved.
So motion on the floor to do so, it's been seconded. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, Senator, motion carries now. County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I had one on the agenda, it's a chairman's update.
Okay. I'm going to be as brief as I can this evening, under the circumstances that we have a lot to cover this evening. But this evening, I want, I just take a moment to talk to you about, we have a number of individuals in this county, well, tons of folks in this county that we're fortunate to have, and they, they take things upon their own self to handle and do things. The south end of Old Man's Harbor Bridge, there's a NC DOT site on the left-hand side of the bridge that, quite honestly, really hadn't been taken care of in a number of years. And there's this one individual that took upon itself back in April of 2021, after a day of kayaking and enjoying the day at this particular location. Then he was, he and his wife were stunned by the poor condition of the site. So he proceeds to pick up trash at that site. He's cut back and removed fallen sections of trees that's fallen on that site. He's, we, I've, I've helped him reach out to NC DOT to have a couple of sinkholes in the parking area by NC DOT to have them filled. He's relocated yards of sand from the north and south sides of the parking area, and he's done it by hand. He's trimmed and removed overgrown vegetation along the metal fence that runs along that, that parking lot. The shoulder of the parking lot was raked, and he seeded it, seeded it himself. The new, he cuts the grass there every two weeks. He's put new dumping signs, no dumping signs there, and it's been installed by NC Highway Department, NC DOT. He's also had two additional smaller dumps, dumping signs and fish cleaning sands installed there. He's put up three-by-three garbage bins that he built himself, and so that he collects trash every, every week for the last nine months. He's been doing that and removing an average of about 1,600 pounds of trash from the polluted sand. The parking area is maintained twice a week by blowing the sand and leaves and branches from the site. He does that on his own. The sand's raked daily. There's a little beach area down there. He rakes the sand daily for folks to enjoy the area. He's, he's planted two flower beds from materials that were on the site, that's old, old pieces of asphalt or block that's been laying around. He's planted flowers. He's just gone above and beyond at this site. Hundreds of black type doped pieces of asphalt, as I said, he's picked up and collected, and he's built a little perimeter for the flower beds. Dozens of sections of broken curb were uncovered and pulled from the water, and he's used that for making additional flower beds. He's asked for donations to allow him to build a six-foot bench overlooking the flowers and sound and sunset every afternoon, an American flag. He's installed an American flag on the site to show, to show the patriotism. It's just a small plaque that's been there on the trash bins, just to remind people, you know, this isn't a dump site. It's, it's a clean place to fish, kayak, and just sit and relax. He's done all of this on his own, once again, since April of 2021. He's out there daily. It's just commendable. He's actually named the site. He's calling it Pineapple Beach. And he's got a little sign out there that he's, that he's made and done that. The site is immaculate. You go down there now, you can actually walk in the sand without walking on bricks and rocks and trash and whatever. And he's just to be commended for what he's done at that site. I'm going to ask, I'm going to come down front, because I got a special presentation I've, I've met Andy at the site a couple of times in the very beginning, and nobody's any more passionate than, than Andy about what he's doing for the community there. Andy, I'm going to destroy your last name. Delavilla, Delviller. Unbelievable guy. Just committed to his community, wanting his community to look nice and have a great place to pull in when, when, if you've been on a long trip and you come across the bridge and you pull in there. It's just a nice atmosphere with flowers and, and the beach, where you can walk on the beach and just enjoy it. Andy, I'm going to ask you to come forward, because I got something special to present to you from our board. Andy, this is, turn around this way. We want everybody to see you. This is a certificate of appreciation by the Dare County Board of Commissioners and grateful recognition of your passion, dedication, and tireless effort to serve as, in an exceptional way, the stewardship of a unique coastal environment of the Outer Banks of North Carolina and all of your extensive volunteer work, particularly right here at the creation of Pineapple Beach.
Wow, that's impressive.
On Roanoke Island. Dare County Board of Commissioners salute you, Andy, for your extraordinary effort to improve the community in which you live and for the profound and positive impact that your volunteer service has on our community.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's have, let's have a picture. Let's have a picture. Next time, next time I'm down there, I hope you got some fresh pineapple and a glass of water I can enjoy.
We'll have a barbecue.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Thank you. Just another great example of our residents and citizens giving back to the community. County Manager, that completes my county chairman report this evening.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, and this is a presentation of the county service pins. Tonight, we have Julie Cabana to receive her 10-year pin from Danielle Stein, if you'd
Welcome this evening, ladies.
Hi. How's that? Is that good? All right. Good evening. My name is Danielle Stein and am the in-home aid supervisor with Social Services. Julie's many years of service are a true testimony to her dedication to the in-home aid program with Social Services. She is truly valued for her contributions to the care that she provides to the residents of Dare County. Along with working as a full-time in-home aide, Julie is married and a wonderful dedicated mother of two sons and a daughter. Julie's talents of professionalism and clinical skills have helped numerous clients over the years. She is a valued team member and offers to help in whatever way possible. When taking care of residents in our community, there are times when our aides tend to the needs of hospice clients. This year, one particular client passed away, and after her passing, I received a phone call from the client's niece. During the phone call, the client's niece stated, and I quote, "Julie had a great spiritual connection with her aunt, and it meant so much as her death grew near, drew near." This compassion and connection to others is not a skill that you can teach. Julie's heartfelt compassion goes above and beyond her duties as an in-home aide. With this being said, Julie has spearheaded Dare Friends, a local young adult support program that focuses on the needs of those that have autism. She is always giving her time and effort to those in need. It is great pride that I present this 10-year service pin to Julie. This recognition reflects the county's appreciation for her dedicated years of service and is a symbol of her professional achievements. I also want to express my personal appreciation of her achievement with this decade of service. Julie, please note that you are an important member of our team. Your abilities and contributions are the basis of continued service that we, that we provide to the residents of Dare County. Dedicated and loyal employees like you are hard to find. You are a part of the foundation and cornerstone to the success of the in-home aid program. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Julie, I think you have some special people coming in. If y'all wanted to come up here, the family, friends?
I just wanted to say something really quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So it's a privilege to be able to work for Dare County and be a certified nursing assistant here. And growing up, my Aunt Anne taught me that if you love your job, then you're not really working. I love my job. It's a privilege to be able to go in people's homes and care for them. Some of them live alone, and they don't have anybody. And other people live with their families, and I'm able to help the families know how to care for their loved ones better. And this means so much, especially, especially when their loved one is getting older and they don't know how many more years they have left. It means a lot to my heart to be able to connect with these folks on a special way that words cannot explain, and to be able to help them in whatever way I can, and to be able to connect with them and really learn from them. My goodness, I learned so much from these folks. They're amazing and beautiful. And, and the words of Saint Joan de Ak, "I was born for this." I love Dare County and I love my job. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Next, we have Charlene Garrish. She's here to receive her 15-year pin from Chief Jenny Collins.
Good evening, ladies. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Charlene Garrish, who is getting her 15-year pin tonight. Many people in EMS sometimes have families that are involved in EMS, and Charlene's journey to Dare County EMS was, actually started with her sister.
As a dare.
As a dare, that's right. In 2007, she was working at a pizza restaurant locally. Her sister had been in EMS for some time, was actually a paramedic, but worked in Durham. And basically made a joke that if she went and got her EMT certification, that she would move back home and help Charlene with her parents, who lived down on Okeechobee Island, as her parents were starting to get a little older. So Charlene, not to shy away from a dare, started her training, became certified as an EMT in spring of 2008, which she was hired by Dare County EMS then, and actually, her sister was hired by Dare County EMS as a paramedic at the same time. Her sister held up the, her end of the bargain, moved back home. And later that year, Charlene began her EMT intermediate, intermediate training to further her certification, which she got, and she was promoted. And then in 2010, her sister reneged on her and left her and said that she was really missing Durham, and she wanted to return to the Durham area, which she did. Luckily for us, Charlene didn't go anywhere. In 2015, she figured it was time to advance her certification again to paramedic, and she was successful in that. In 2018, not to shy away from a challenge again, she decided to pursue a position as lieutenant, was promoted. So if you asked her, you know, Charlene absolutely loves her job. Being, working in the, in the county for years in the service industry, she found her way to EMS, and it was a source of pride and joy for her to be able to work in the community that she loved so dearly and to be able to give back and take care of community members. So she defines herself as a Dare EMS success, successful story. So she's been able to find a fulfilling career here. It's close to home, which is Okeecrook. She's native from Okeecrook Island. Her parents are still there, but she's extremely proud to be part of this community, and we are extremely proud to have her part of our department. So while she will debate me, I'm going to give this 15 years and hope she gives another 15 back, but she might debate me on that number. We'll see.
I'm on the back end now.
Congratulations, Charlene.
I just want to say thank you to Dare County. You guys took a chance on someone who was lost in life 15 years ago, and the opportunity you gave me, gave me a purpose in life. And I want to thank you for that. And the number one thing I want to thank is all my friends standing back there. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be who I am and where I am at today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Avette Pollak is eligible for her 25-year pin today. She could not be here tonight, but asked that we go ahead and make the presentation. And so Chuck Wissette is here to make that presentation.
Welcome this evening, Chuck.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present Avette Pollak with her 25-year pin this evening. Unfortunately, she could not be here. Avette joined the Department of Social Services in April 1998 as a social worker in the Child Protective Services Unit. In 2002, she changed roles and assumed the childcare coordinator position, where she has remained for the last 21 years. She coordinates the childcare subsidy program and directly collaborates with families, providers, and other agency staff to ensure eligible children receive quality child subsidy services. She has extensive program knowledge and experience that make her an invaluable asset to the Family Services Unit and to the department. On behalf of the agency, I would like to congratulate and thank her for her 25 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
That brings us to our employee of the month, and if Chuck Wissette would come back up to make that presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Woodard and Commissioners. In North Carolina, the county departments of social services are responsible for determining Medicaid and FNS food nutrition eligibility for their residents. Processing applications is labor-intensive, as there is little automation to determine eligibility. This week, the Economic Services Unit begins the task of Medicaid and FNS unwinding from the pandemic, meaning individuals who were determined to be ineligible during the pandemic will be terminated. Before terminating an individual, the worker must manually decide if the individual is eligible for another program. This same unit is, this is the same unit that is preparing to process the estimated 1,800 applications for Dare County residents as part of Medicaid expansion. The challenges this unit will face over the next 12 months is dawning. Joshua Marine says, "Challenges are what make life interesting, and overcoming them is what makes life meaningful." I'm excited to present this month's employee of the month to an individual who rose up to meet a significant challenge over the last year. Not only because of the individual overcame the challenge, the individual has grown professionally as a result. Crystal, will you please do it?
Crystal has spent almost 23 years working in economic services. In 2016, she was promoted to income maintenance supervisor. She supervises eight staff who were responsible for determining eligibility for adult Medicaid and non-emergency Medicaid transportation. The adult Medicaid program that she oversees is one of the most difficult programs in Medicaid because of the number of rules they must know and apply. In, in any given case, staff must be able to re-trust, search for property and personal property, understand bank statements and retirement plans, read medical records, and be a sleuth at finding other income an individual may have. All of this must be completed within individual established time frames. Crystal's challenge began in June of 2022, when one of her two most seasoned workers announced her retirement effective in September 2022. She had one vacancy. Between July and early August, five more, excuse me, of her staff resigned for various reasons. She now had six vacancies. In September, the trainer serving her unit transferred within Dare County. There were now seven vacancies, amongst others that were in the, in the department at the time. Willer Spencer, the program administrator, and I asked Crystal if she was up to the challenge of completing the unit's work until the positions were filled, and if she was ready to provide the training to the new staff. I knew Crystal was a good trainer, because I used to listen to her weekly training sessions in the conference room next door. She accepted the challenge. Other staff were able to assist with processing some of the applications. Her unit was approved for overtime and comp time. We brought Vicky White, Vicky White, who had retired, back part-time to assist Crystal. Each week, Crystal and the supervisors interviewed candidates for vacancies. As new staff were hired, Crystal started training them. Throughout this, her two remaining staff, Donna Spencer and Heather Watts, processed applications. Donna Spencer is our expert in long-term care, think of nursing home care, and Heather Watts is responsible for our non-emergency Medicaid transportation, as well as taking applications in adult Medicaid. There were not many nights that Donna and Crystal were in the office into the early evening, working to ensure beneficiaries receive their Medicaid benefits on time. A new challenge arose with having to fill two, the two remaining positions, one focusing on long-term care and the other focusing on training. Following our philosophy of growing your own staff, Crystal committed to training the two individuals, who brought with them a wealth of experience from other backgrounds, but had little experience within social services. By March, she had filled all of her vacancies. Crystal realizes the work has just begun, and she's committed to the ongoing development of her team. Crystal is described as fair and nonjudgmental. She works alongside her staff. She is aware of staff stress and works with them to keep it in check. She keeps her staff informed and meets monthly with them. She is one of the cleanest, most organized, and meticulous staff I've ever met. With all of the reports, cases, and training that she completes daily, there is not a single piece of paper on her desk. Throughout this challenge, her unit has met the monthly state timeliness standard for processing applications. She was also able to take time to welcome her first grandchild into the family. It is fitting that we publicly recognize her work today, because last week, we recognized her at our agency staff meeting. Her commitment, leadership, being proactive, dedication to her unit have allowed Crystal to overcome the challenges before her. She is a true example of someone who is dedicated to her work and cares about the residents of Dare County. She is a shining example of a Dare County employee who goes above and beyond. Congratulations, Crystal, on being selected Dare County Employees of the Month. And this is for your desk. Congratulations.
Before we move to the next agenda, would all of you that received awards go out through this door to get a picture made with Caitlin, please? This is a proclamation celebrating the week of the young child, and Sarah Sampson's asked me to read this proclamation for your approval.
County Manager, we have broadband update.
I'm sorry, I have to get, we'll do that next then. We have broadband update from Charter, and Eric Collins is here for that presentation.
Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Collins. We appreciate you taking the time to bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, it's good to be with you here, driving in and seeing the beautiful county of Dare County, a four and a, four and a half hour drive to get here, but it was worth it after I, I arrived. And being in telecommunications, I'm sure I can cut this off. Attaboy. That was simple. It was a slide. So my name's Eric Collins, Director of Government Affairs with Charter Communications. As you know, when you're out in the streets and you see our vehicles, it says Spectrum. Charter Communications is a parent company. Spectrum is just a brand of, of Charter Communications. We are a leader in providing video services, broadband services, digital phone, as well as mobile services. And- Spectrum is just a brand of Charter Communications. We are a leader in providing video services, broadband services, digital phone, as well as mobile services. And as we continue in the future, we always look for opportunities to expand those services to new areas that we serve. We are one of the largest providers in building out rural broadband across the United States. So with that, I wanted to provide you some updates of Charter, what we currently have. Get back up one. So currently, our service area in municipalities besides Dare County is Kiloheva Hills, Kitty Hawk, Manio, Nag's Head, and Southern Shores. So we pretty much run the shoreline, providing broadband services. Our services reach out past those municipal limits, and we do provide services to those customers that are part non, and not a municipality, and unincorporated areas. I provided, next we see a map, I actually posted two maps here, if you can see those maps.
Mr. Collins, I hate to interrupt you, but based on what you just said, would that include Hatteras Island?
Hatteras Island, yes, I'm going to get there.
Okay, I got you, I'm ahead of you, I apologize.
Yeah, on the slide that you see before you now, I actually present two slides to you. One is, you can see a little bit better than the other. And one's a hybrid map, and the other is just a standard map. When you look at the map, you'll see the highlighted areas in blue, surrounded, those are our service territories. And as you see, it goes all the way back around to Hatteras Island. So those are our service areas that we provide all of these services to our customers. Interesting thing is, over the past years and what we've learned through the pandemic, is that there, across the country, a lot of our customers and a lot of residents have not been able to get broadband, because it was not affordable to them. So we actually started prior, years prior to that, what we call our Internet Assist Program. It's a low-cost Internet Assist for our customers who meet the threshold of a free or reduced lunch for school-aged children, and also for seniors who receive a social security disability benefit. They can receive services of 30 megabytes by four upload for $19.99. During the pandemic, the FCC came out with a program called the ACP Program. It's Affordable Connectivity Program. We are a participant in that program, and we also, at the same time, we launched our Spectrum 100. So in essence, with our Spectrum 100 package for $59.99, a customer or resident who meets those same guidelines as our Spectrum Internet Assist of receiving a free or reduced lunch, or a senior that receives a social security disability benefit, they can, essence, can receive our Spectrum 100 service of 100 by 10, free. In order for residents to apply for those programs, they actually have to go online. I know that's a sort of crazy statement, if they don't have broadband service, how do they get online?
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of times, we're in a lot of libraries and other places. They can actually call our service line, and they will walk them through the process of applying for those services. And also, a part of this is our current service plan that we have available to consumers here in Dare County. Next slide is just a slide you will have in your packet, just showing and talking about what I just spoke about as far as broadband affordability programs. As far as our network is concerned, currently, we provide a hybrid fiber-based Internet and infrastructure solution in Dare County. What hybrid fiber coax is, is we have a backbone of fiber that serves nodes, and with that, we are able to provide speeds up to a gig. Over the last three or four years, we've upgraded our infrastructure so that customers could receive up to a gig service of Internet speeds, as well as our other services. What we're looking at and doing in the future, our corporate office has made a commitment, and our chief operating office and the chief field operating office at our corporate has made a decision that over the next two to three years, we're going to completely upgrade our infrastructure. We're going to upgrade our infrastructure using what we call a technology called HighSplit. HighSplit is a technology where we use a frequency bandwidth within our spectrum of services, and we allocate those services specifically to broadband. And what it does is allows us to offer even symmetrical speeds of a one gig upload and one gig down. It also allows us to increase speeds up to 10 gig. So in the next couple of years, you should begin seeing activity from our construction crews here in Dare County with those upgrades going on. So we're very excited about that endeavor. Typically, in the future, and what we're doing, and we're doing currently, is all builds that we're doing is typically a fiber-to-the-premise network. So with the fiber-to-the-premise network, we already have the infrastructure of a hybrid fiber coax system. We spoke about it earlier, it's typically what it is, is this coax cable that goes into your home, you're all familiar with that. With the HighSplit, it allows us to use hybrid fiber, the hybrid fiber coax system, and use that coax cable that goes into the home, but it allows those residents to receive the same services as someone who was, would receive a fiber-to-the-premise network, which would have a fiber going into the home. So we're very excited about that, and we are excited about potential discussions with the county. If the county determines and finds that there's particular unserved areas in the county that they would like to speak with us about, yes, sir.
To the uninformed, why am I excited by getting a coax feed that is equivalent to a fiber feed? You just said that you're very excited about that. In layman's terms, why would I be excited as a recipient of that, for instance?
Because with HighSplit, with HighSplit, what you have is you have a more dependable, reliable system.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a more reliable system, and also, it allows us to add more product to our platform.
So fiber is a higher-grade delivery system, yet even if I have coax with this technology, I will benefit like a fiber?
Yes, yes, you will.
Okay, I was just trying to understand why that's such a good thing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And we're going to be investing billions of dollars across the United States, upgrading those networks. So with that, I would be glad to entertain any questions. Let me finish my last statement, as far as a particular partnership. If the county is aware of any unserved areas that the county, I know there is another provider that's actually in the county doing an upgrade of their network to provide broadband, fiber to the premise as well. But if there's areas within the county that the county would like for us to take a look at, we'd be more than willing to sit down and have a discussion with that. As you know, the state has two grants that's going on currently. They have the Great Grant, and then they have new grant coming called Cab Grant. The Cab Grant has not started yet, because they really haven't completed the Great Grant. And with the Great Grant, we're still awaiting for awards to be made. As I understand it, the state is talking about putting additional funds into that. Granted, Charter Communications did not apply for a Great Grant in Dare County, and it was based on the fact that what we're building using the Great Grant would be a fiber-to-the-premise build. And in order to build to Dare County, we would have to build a fiber network from, actually from 95 to Wilson area, as we're getting also into Elizabeth City, Martin County, to get to here. So it's not out of the realm of the possibility. But with HighSplit coming around, I don't think that's going to be an issue for us. So if the county is interested in having discussions, probably about any potential unserved areas, we'd love to have a discussion with you about that.
Sir, may I ask you a question? On the HighSplit, or what would you call it, HighSplit coax, I'm assuming this would mean that if you're with Spectrum now, and you have a regular coax service, and you're getting, I don't know, 100 megabytes, 200 megabytes, you would have to put in this new, that cable would have to be replaced with this cable or not?
No, that infrastructure going into your home will remain the same.
See, that was the exciting part.
It's just the infrastructure.
You don't have to replace it, you're going to get the benefit using your coax.
Yeah.
I thought that's what I was saying.
The overall system infrastructure is completely upgraded.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Unincorporated villages of Rodanthe, Way, Salvo, Avon, Buxton, Frisco, Hatteras, located on Hatteras Island, receive access to Internet via a single fiber, right? Connection, a single optic line owned by Bright Speed, is that right?
I'm not familiar with their network, but I'm sure that's correct.
Okay, it is.
Yes.
Does Charter lease space on a cable to provide service on Hatteras Island?
I'm not, I have to check, I'm not aware. We do lease fiber, dark fiber, to get from point A to point B in some scenarios in some states. I'm not very, I'm not familiar that we're doing that in Dare County.
I guess where I'm going with this is, Hatteras Island has had telephone communications and access to the Internet relying on this one single fiber cable. And we, due to overwash and a lot of other issues, that cable line's cut, and when it's cut, we lose 911 services, which, I mean, that's pretty critical. Does Charter or Spectrum have the ability to restore service without relying on Bright Speed's fiber?
If it's a fiber that we lease dark fiber from, we don't repair it. The owner of that fiber is responsible for repairing it.
Well, has Charter or either Spectrum engaged Bright Speed to talk about uninterrupted service delivery? Have y'all had any conversations with them?
I'm not sure, I would have to check with our field ops teams, our field op and management team. I would have to check with them on that.
Because, I mean, it's critical for us to find out what Charter and Spectrum's doing to ensure that these 911 calls from a home voice will reach the 911 center. Because, I mean, we cover three counties.
Absolutely.
What's really concerning about that is, is we're heading into high tourist season, and we're having about 48,000 people down there every Saturday on, straight on for the 15-week stretch between Memorial Day to Labor Day. So it'd be good to talk about and have a plan big, because the last time it was shut down for seven hours.
Right.
Absolutely.
So in fairness to you guys, have y'all been made aware that we've had some 911 issues?
I'm sure our field ops teams have. I'm sure they'd be made aware, I'm not aware of it, it never made it to me, but.
Got you. Well, if that's something this Commissioner Couch has recommended, I mean, that's critical.
Absolutely.
911 issues are critical for Hatteras Island, and it was just, I mean, we had a 17-hour outage recently in May, and we just had a six-hour outage in October. And then another seven-hour outage in February. So if that's something you could
Absolutely.
really look into for us, we'd be greatly appreciative.
We'll address it, and we'll get a response back to the county manager.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Collins. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I hate to be just a death, but being kind of challenged on this conversation, what magically turns the current cable that's underground into HighSplit?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
It's my voice, I'm sorry to interrupt. What takes the regular cable that's coming from telephone pole to the house now, what magically turns that when you put in your new fiber? What magically turns that cable into HighSplit?
Well, what HighSplit does, it's a combination of using the fiber and the coax, but it's that spectrum, it's that frequency that technologies now come about that allows us to utilize that frequency called HighSplit. So the service that's actually from the home, or from the road going to the home, that's not impacted, it's the frequency in which it rides on that changes.
The capability of the frequency of the other.
That's correct.
And it's being underutilized now.
That is correct. You know, there's certain requirements when you start talking about FCC frequencies, the FCC maintains and controls those frequencies and what they can be utilized for.
I mean, with this new system, is it going to enhance the quality of reception for TV and so forth also?
I would expect that it would. I think it's going to improve the overall quality of services. You know, I always say, you know, you have the ability, it's an interesting thing that when you talk about broadband, when you talk about a gig, everyone thinks they need a gig. And then, you know, with this, it allows us some metrical speeds, but I have yet to meet anyone in a household that needs a gig speed. But everybody wants that gig speed, they want the ability to be able to get that. But yeah, it will improve the overall quality of our services.
Anyone else?
Just one thing, with the upgrades that'll be happening, going on with this, do you expect that during the upgrade of putting the new system in, or changing everything out, that we would have periodic outages of Internet?
I have not been made aware of that. If we do, I can assure you, we will let customers know prior to going into a street and doing an upgrade, and let them know, because of the necessity of work-from-home broadband, telehealth, and things of that nature.
Yeah, that's my main concern, because we already have plenty of areas around Dare County that the Internet will go out on periodically, not just with the severity of what we've had on Hatteras Island, but also in the other areas of the county where the Internet, we could go down for two or three hours. And that actually hurts a lot of our home businesses and stuff like that, like you were saying, so.
Yeah, and that's the concern with home businesses, small home businesses. It's not only that, but there's a lot of folks working from home.
Right, thank you. Mr. Collins, thank you again, and we really appreciate you being here this evening and helping us understand some of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, have a safe trip home. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this would bring us to the proclamation for the Week of the Young Child, celebrating our youngest learners. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children and the North Carolina Association for the Education of Young Children is celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 1st through 7th, 2023. And whereas working to promote and ensure high-quality early learning opportunities for all children during the first years of life, when the most rapid brain development occurs, that lays the foundation for all future learning. And whereas recognizing, appreciating, and supporting early childhood educators who make a difference in the lives of young children leads to high-quality early childhood experiences for Dare's youngest citizens. And whereas connecting parents and families with resources and information enhances the healthy development of Dare County's young children. And whereas public policies and partnerships that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our local community and larger society. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 1st through 7th, 2023 as Week of the Young Child in Dare County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the needs and support the healthy development of every young child in Dare County. This is the third day of April 2023."
Move to adoption.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and the Vice Chairman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
And then similarly, we have a proclamation before you, this is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable asset. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect are a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, along with the resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Dare County, and call upon all citizens to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. This is the third day of April 2023."
Is a motion on the floor to approve There's a motion on the floor to approve April, month of April, as Child Abuse Prevention Month from the Vice Chairman. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then, Ms. Chairman, Items 8 and 9. 8 is the Dare County Tourism Board Request Expenditures from the Long-Term Unappropriated Fund Grant Line, Item 4585. And Item 9 is the Dare County Tourism Board Request Consent Expenditures from the Short-Term Restrictive Fund Line, Item 5160. And Lee Nettles is here for both of those.
Welcome this evening, Lee. All the way back in the back of the room tonight.
You got a lot of people waiting to talk to you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I have two separate funding consent requests for your consideration, both of which have been reviewed and unanimously supported by the Dare County Tourism Board at its last meeting. The first request is for expenditures within the Tourism Board's Short-Term Restrictive Fund to support July 4th fireworks. Each of the four applications received by the Tourism Board were determined to have equal merit. The request exceeded the funds available, so the Board developed an approach to distribute the funds fairly. The available budget was $55,000, which divided four ways, equal $13,750. The amount fully funded the Kill Devil Hills request of $12,200 and the Naxhead request of $13,750. The remaining $29,050 was split equally between the Town of Manio and the Avon Property Owners Association, with each receiving awards of $14,525. The Tourism Board is proud to offer its support to the July 4th fireworks displays, and respectfully request your consent of the expenditure.
Motion to approve.
There's, okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve as presented. Short-Term Restrictive Fund has been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Lee? What's that number now? 10 million what? 10 million plus what?
Oh, it's, it's...
It's incredible. Probably more than that.
The restricted fund is, is more like 15 million back into the community.
That's incredible.
Thank you. The second consent request before you this evening is from the Tourism Board's Long-Term Unappropriated Fund in the amount of $75,000 to help the Roanoke Island Historical Association purchase a new sound array for the updated production of Lost Colony. The show's been reimagined, the production greatly enhanced with the sound array and a state-of-the-art projection system. This equipment has been deemed vital for the production to continue. The Tourism Board's investment of $75,000 will be matched with $75,000 from the state to purchase the sound array. It's expected that the sound equipment will serve the production at least until the Lost Colony's 100th season, which will be in 2037, not too far away. This request also received unanimous support from the Tourism Board, who respectfully request your consent on the expenditure. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Lee?
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. It's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Once again, thank you for what the Tourism Board does. It's incredible amount of money that y'all put back into the community. So, thank you. Please express our appreciation to your board.
I, I definitely will. We appreciate your support in the communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Chairman, that brings us back up to Item 4, which is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. Tonight, we have a lot of people, and just to be sure everybody understands what's going on tonight, public comment is a time for you to come and speak to the Board about anything that you want. You have five minutes to tell them whatever you want them to hear, and, and we'll let everybody have their opportunity to speak. In a little while, the Cluster Home item will come up as what's called a quasi-judicial hearing. And in that hearing, that's a trial, if you will, where the applicant has to prove to the Board that they've met the conditions of the ordinance in order for the Board to grant their conditional use permit. And they have to do that with evidence that they present, experts that they present, that make sure that they meet all those requirements. That evidence is sworn testimony, and there have, anybody that would speak during that part of the night would have to be sworn and be presenting evidence. That is not the opportunity to give your opinion. That's the opportunity to present evidence that would say that they either do or do not meet the criteria, or that there's some other condition that needs to be imposed. In order to participate in the quasi-judicial hearing, you have to have standing. The North Carolina General Statute defines standing as a person with ownership interest in the property, a person with an option to contract or purchase the property, the applicant, any person who will suffer special damages as a result of the decision. And that means damages to that person above and beyond the damages to the community at large. So, if there's someone that has some special damage as a result of this, they would have standing to, to put on evidence. Otherwise, you, you don't have standing to, to speak at this, and the Board isn't allowed to hear that testimony. The Board can only make a decision based on the evidence that they hear at the quasi-judicial hearing. These are things that are set by the North Carolina General Statute, by the legislature, and the Boards required to follow those rules. As we go through public comment here in just a minute, there's two questions that we have gotten multiple times through multiple emails that it may be important to answer so that it can help you as you make your public comment. One is, why don't we just change the ordinance to prevent this from happening? And, again, the legislature adopted a statute about three or four years ago, GS 143-755, and it says that if an applicant submits a permit application, and a change is adopted after that application, the applicant has the right to choose whichever rule he wants, either the one before or the one after. So, changing the rule by statute doesn't solve the problem. So, even if the Board wanted to stop it and change the ordinance, the applicant would have the right to go back and choose the old ordinance under the provisions of 143-755. That's not a rule that Dare County made. That's a rule that the legislature made in Raleigh. The second question that we've gotten a lot is, why don't we oppose a moratorium? And GS 160D 107 provides that local governments can do moratoriums. However, it says that we can only adopt a moratorium for a development approval except a moratorium on regulations governing residential uses. So, the legislature says you have this power to stop things and to do moratoriums and to take a broader look, but you can't do it if it's involved with a residential. So, they took the Board's power to stop this with a moratorium away from them. And, again, that rule was passed four or five years ago, at the same time the election rule. So, that's why there hasn't been a moratorium, and that's why the rule couldn't be changed ahead of time, and that's why we're required to go forward with the quasi-judicial hearing that we're going to start here in just a minute when we complete public comment. If you are here for public comment, I'll go down the list, I'll call you, you come up and make your public comment. If you're here to put on evidence, then you're going to need to be sworn. It has to be sworn evidence, just like in court. And people that want to, to put on evidence, then you have to have standing. And if you have standing and you have evidence to present that isn't repetitive of evidence that's already been presented, then we'll give you the opportunity to present your evidence then as well. If you present evidence during the quasi-judicial hearing, the, both the Board and the applicant's attorney will have the opportunity to ask you questions and cross-examine you to, to figure out what your evidence is. And it's just like a trial that you have in court. And similarly, as the applicant puts on his evidence, the Board will have the right to cross-examine them to make sure they understand and to, to get those things as well. So, with that said, we'll move on to public comment. At public comment, you have five minutes. We've got a lot of people signed up that want to speak, and because we do, we're going to hold you to the five-minute time. And so, usually I let it go to try to let you conclude at a reasonable amount of time, but tonight, we'll never get out of here if everybody doesn't hold to the time. So, at five minutes, we're going to cut you off wherever you are and, and bring the next person up. There's a green light up there that'll come on when your time starts. There's a yellow light that'll come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks, and that's the point where we'll cut you off and ask for the next person. With that said, the first person, I'm sorry, we'll go to Buckston first. Is there any public comment from Buckston?
No comment from Buckston.
Right. With that, then we'll move on. First person on the sign-up seat is Justin Bateman.
Welcome, Mr. Bateman.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Justin Bateman. I'm no relation to Commissioner Bateman that I'm aware of. I'm 38 years old, and I'm an eighth-generation wine cheeser. I grew up here, and I've lived in wine cheese most of my life. I currently live in wine cheese. I have a wife and two young boys, ages eight and two. I spent many days as a boy riding my bike past this piece of property in question, to and from the wine cheese baseball fields, among other places, with my friends, with little to no worry about my safety or anything like that. My statements right now are not to you, the Board of Commissioners, but to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, I just have a few questions for you. After all this uproar and pushback from the community, why do you still continue to want to do this? Now, I'm not someone well-versed on the laws and the things surrounding this whole situation, but I honestly believe that you, sir, could stop this whole project right now if you wanted to. This began with you, and it could all end with you. I believe you could stand up right now and say, you know what? Let's pull the plug on this whole thing, and it's over with. You have 99% of a community that does not want this. This development will forever change the face of wine cheese. I want my children, and potentially my children's children, to grow up in a less crowded environment where they don't have to worry about their safety. And in the research I've done, these types of structures and communities have historically not produced the types of folks we want wandering our streets. Honestly, Mr. Alexander, is what you could potentially profit monetarily from this development worth hurting an entire community? Is this what you want? My daddy always told me not to bring a problem to the table without a solution, so here's a solution. Stop this. Stop this whole production dead in its tracks. Tally up the amount of money that this has cost you so far, and tack on an extra percentage for your time, effort, and personal gain, and give the Wine Cheese Preservation Alliance the opportunity to raise the money to pay you back. I'm willing to bet, I look around here, there's a good handful of folks in this room that would whip out their checkbooks right now and stroke a check for a large amount if you did this. I don't have a whole lot of money in the bank, but I know I would donate to the preservation of my home in a heartbeat. You say you want to work with the people of wine cheese, is that right? Is that right? Well, here's your chance. Here's your chance. There aren't many things in this world that I love more than wine cheese, and I'm humbly asking you today, sir, to please stop the construction and development of cluster homes in wine cheese. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman.
Johnny Robbins.
Welcome this evening, Johnny.
Thank you, Commissioners Bobby and folks from wine cheese and the developer. I want to share a few thoughts that I have about this development that's planned for wine cheese. I was born in Manio, and by June, I'll achieve my 80th year. So, my parents moved me to Norfolk when I was about three years old, but that was never home. Home was Dare County, Skico. My mother was a midget, and I was fortunate to have a grandfather, Marcus Midget, who walked around through the fields and woods and taught me a lot about the history of his family and about this area. Although I lived in Norfolk and went to high school and school there all of my years, I couldn't wait to get back here when I started working because I never spent, in growing up, I never spent Thanksgiving or Christmas or more than 40% of my summers anywhere but in Skico. So, I've grown up under, having an understanding of this community, and I've seen a lot of growth, and I've seen a lot of changes. And my wife and I had the opportunity to be a third of the faculty of Kitty Hawk School in 1968. We had 106 students in our school. That was everybody from grade one through eight. Then, four years later, I was at Manio High School, and I was very much aware of the growth that was going on in our county. And I was an early supporter of the fact that we had to have a high school over on the beach. Even though, when I started at Manio High School, I do not believe our high school enrollment, not including junior high, had, had yet reached 300. So, I saw all of those changes, and I was very much aware during the middle of my high years at the high school, when the center of population in Dare County moved from Roanoke Island to the beach. And today, the center of population, I believe, is in Kill Devil Hills. But, back when I started out in, in Dare County, working as an adult, Manio was where it was at. Everything was happening in Manio. If you wanted your groceries, you came to Manio, or you went to Elizabeth City. I mean, this place was happening. Now, with this population center changing, things are, things are different. We've had a lot of people move in here. The beach is totally different. But Roanoke Island is still much as it was in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s. It hasn't changed as much. However, most of the changes have been in Manio and north on Roanoke Island. Wine Cheese is the community that has remained much as it was when my grandfather would take me down on a weekend, and we would go on the docks and see the boats and the fish being offloaded. Wine Cheese is more like it was than any other place on Roanoke Island, and Hatteras is sort of like that, too. So, a few years ago, the people in Wine Cheese had the opportunity to go through a zoning process. And they're sitting here tonight, befuddled. They went through the zoning process, and they thought they had completed it. And then, something happened. And I guess maybe there's nothing that can be done to stop this project from happening. I did a similar project right down up the road here, Cypress Cove. And I think our houses are on similar-sized lots, but they all look different. It's a pleasing appearance. It looks like a village down in South Carolina. And that's not the appearance that this project is going to have. It's not. And, and this project, as planned, does not fit wine cheese. It upsets wine cheesers.
Thank you.
And it upsets their environment. So, I'm appealing, as one developer to another developer...
Robbins, your time's up.
Johnny, we gotta, we gotta move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Replant, and I think... Tom Stewart.
I'm sorry, I missed the name.
Tom Stewart.
My name's Tom Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I'm actually here, I might be kind of lonesome on my own, in support of Mr. Alexander's project in wine cheese. I'm very fortunate to live in the Outer Banks. Lived in other places in Raleigh and elsewhere. And this is a special place. My wife and I truly enjoy it, love it, and have made our home here. I also operate a business in the Outer Banks and we run from Hatteras to another county up the road I won't mention. And, you know, we have a constant conversation in our place of business about workforce housing, workers, where are people going to come from? And how are we going to handle those issues day to day? I was very pleased when very recently the Commissioners made it very clear that priority one for Dare County was workforce housing. And when Brad proposed his development in wine cheese, I said to myself, well, isn't this great? We've got the folks here before me in the county and we've got private enterprise saying, I think I can help you with this and I have an idea and I'd like to go forward with it. What appeals to me, I guess as a businessman, is knowing that there's, you know, and I think these are all wonderful things, too. There's no folks from Ohio, there's no folks from out of state, there's no federal funds, state funds. There's nobody else coming in and saying, well, this is the way you need to do it here in Dare County. There's somebody who's from just up the road, whose family's been here for a long time. There's a man who's done business in Dare County for several years. As far as I know, there are people that know Mr. Alexander or may even be related to him who live in wine cheese. So we're not talking about somebody, an interloper, coming in and saying, I'm going to come in here for a fast buck and get out. I've had lots of conversations with this gentleman and it's been very clear. I don't, he says, I don't want to do short term rentals. And that was a big, a big brouhaha at first. It wasn't true. He said, I'm looking to provide worker housing. He's a businessman, he understands that same problem that we all have here. I looked again today, as I did during the planning phase a couple of months ago, and I went online and I looked and I said, well, let's see. Dare County Schools, forty-five plus job openings. Outer Banks Hospital, health system now, about forty job openings. Dare County, twenty-seven job openings adds up this morning. So that's over a hundred and fifteen job openings and we haven't even looked at restaurants and hotels and my industry and tourism or anything else. And I go, now, wouldn't it be nice? And I'm not saying that this would happen, but wouldn't it be nice if some of those people off these homes right here in wine cheese and became part of this community? The people that educate our children? The people that take care of us? I mean, nobody here is getting any younger. This is crucial. That young lady who came in and got that ten year service pin doing that in-home service? Where are we going to find people like that to look after our kin and our friends and our family? We're not going to have them. Ten years, they're not going to exist because there's nowhere for them to live. I understand, I was privileged, by the way, I want to say, when I was at the planning phase and got to listen to the rich history and the stories and these folks who've been coming here and settling since the mid-eighteenth century, I was in awe. And I said, this is truly a special place, wine cheese is. And when I listened to the pastor do his opening prayer a little earlier this evening, he talked about opening our hearts to the possibility of workforce housing and being open minded about it, I said, yes, that's the chord we need to strike. And it struck me that I think that the folks here in wine cheese have a terrific opportunity to say, hey, we have this incredible thing here. We've spoken about it, we talk about it. And here's a chance to take other folks who want the same opportunity to have that, who are also, well, they might be more recent arrivals, but these folks have been coming in for last two hundred years and as a matter of fact, maybe even more recently than that. I think it's a great opportunity for them to say, we welcome you. Let us show you how life in wine cheese is and how great it can be. Mr. Alexander and his team have put together a proposal that meets the standards and I think aesthetically, and I disagree with this gentleman, exceeds the standards as far as aesthetics goes. I've seen some things in reference to that, looked at the packet. I think it's a great opportunity. I think its time has come. I know it's caused a lot of heartache tonight, but I think in the long run, these folks can be integrated in. They can find out what it's like to live in that community and I think it's going to be for the benefit of everyone. And I sincerely hope that this application passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Rex Mann.
Good evening, guys.
Welcome, Mr. Mann.
Say again?
I said, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here for two reasons tonight. Number one, I love wine cheese. And secondly, Winky Silver asked me to carry the torch. I don't know what generation wine cheese resident I am. I look back at Peter Gallup and Caroline Daniels and got back to the seventeen hundreds through their family in wine cheese. So that's why I'm here. I'm excited to be here and be able to be a part of what's happening. I'd like to start with this fact. I tell my guys that there's only one boss at Man Canucks and that's the customer and they can fire all of us. This operation works the same way. Take a look around. Your source of authority are these people and your power is not legitimate if it disregards the will of the people. NC Constitution, Article One, Section Two. Now, I live in a place where other residents like myself are blessed enough to have a spacey yard, maybe a garage or barn, a swimming pool, or somewhere to park a boat on a trailer, board a horse, even play catch or practice ball with a child. What kind of life are the children going to have that are growing up in these cluster homes? I understand there's a need for housing on the Outer Banks due to the growing numbers of vacationers that we are trying to accommodate, which creates jobs, but I not live in the city. I chose not to. Myself and others here tonight could also build cluster homes, but we chose quality of life over money. Whether or not the zoning change was advertised, we simply were unaware. There's about three thousand people that live in wine cheese and the Coastland Times delivers about sixty-five papers on average a week. That process must change. There has been some recent development and just like the newspaper, no longer being a sufficient way of notifying the people, it's obvious that what was good in two thousand eighteen is not good in two thousand and twenty-three. We are all here tonight because there will not be approvals made based on preliminary plans that do not take into account all of the possible factors and failures that would arise with this actual construction. This elementary idea of building a nearly walls touching particle board community in our village and selling out, leaving my county with its under-engineered construction and poorly thought out septic and drainage systems is not acceptable. Our village will not smell like a sewage plant because of a developer's next business deal. I speak with authority because this whole operation is not of God. God's work is not carried out by money or power, but by authority. My neighbors' families and my own, generations to come, will live in wine cheese and its simplicity the way that I have. If you Commissioners want to add to our village, I suggest you add things like an ambulance or something that will have a positive effect on our families. You knew we had zoned in two thousand and six to protect and preserve our village from this type of growth. It is very clear that in seeing what this two thousand and eighteen zoning change would have allowed, that you yourself didn't realize how far this would go. In this particular case, we understand the developer has an investment to get this far, as do we. Let's work together, knowing education is not free, and come up with a solution where everyone wins. We don't have to sue each other. We can just settle. Commissioners, I thank you for taking a stand and know that we stand behind you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Amy Phillips.
Amy Phillips. Welcome this evening, Ms. Phillips.
I appreciate the opportunity to address this august body. I'm thinking about quality of life. I live in Cypress Cove. I'm so grateful that the builder got to develop that, but now he doesn't want, and I appreciate that he doesn't want it to happen now in wine cheese. It is very difficult for me and others in my community to get out on sixty-four. There are other developments near CVS that they're talking about and they've sued to get Manio to approve it. It takes me in the summertime on a rainy day, twenty minutes at least, to get to the foodarama because of the backup of traffic. This little road was never meant to hold this much traffic. You bring all those people into wine cheese. We only have two drugstores, one is a chain. We only have two grocery stores. We don't have sufficient medical services, doctors in Manio that will be able to provide for extra additional people in wine cheese? Think about our quality of life. Think about all the changes that have come about after COVID, all the people that have moved here, all the construction that's going on. All I ask you to do is to think about us and our quality of life. I came here in the early two thousands and I became a part of this community. Master gardener, friend of youth, volunteer. And I believe in this community and it breaks my heart. I had to go away for two years. My husband was ill and he died and I came back here and I was shocked at what's going on in Dare County, the development. I won't even go over on the beach in the summertime unless I go off hours to try to do some grocery shopping because it's a madhouse over there. I came back here and I wanted to be a part of this and now I have at times questioned, Amy, why did you come back here? Look what they're doing to your community. My husband would be so remorseful if he could see what's happening here. We deserve consideration. We deserve better housing for people, I understand that. But we also, greed is a big part of Dare County now. Sell my house, make it into an Airbnb. You know, everybody wants more money and more money does not equate to quality of life. I would like to think that we would work smarter and not harder about these situations and give the community what we need. I went for a year after I got home without a physician. You know, and you bring more people in here and it just takes more load on the services. Adding more people in wine cheese is going to bring them right over to Manio. I feel sorry for wine cheese, but I feel sorry for us, too. And I just really want you to consider what you're thinking about or if you're thinking about approving it because it's not fair to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Sybil Ross.
Well, good evening.
Welcome, Ms. Ross.
Thank you. Thank you for providing the opportunity, for letting us come and speak. You know, my great grandmother, all once I had great great grandmother, was a Howard from Mogukoke. And on the other side was a Scarborough from Hatteras. My maiden name is Daniels. My mother was an Etheridge, her mother was a Doe. Now, y'all know my gene pool was messed up. There's no doubt about it. But we, so I'm a was here and we have a lot of come here. Well, it's home to a lot of people now and it's getting to be home to more and more. But that brings me to my background. I came here, moved back home in nineteen eighty-five, I was born here. We formed the Friends of Roanoke Island and through that organization, we were able to answer land to the Park Service and work with communities in developing their land use plans. And we had a whole planning process there. Then Dare County in nineteen eighty-four, you know, they finally had a planning department, a planning director, and they hired Booze Allen Hamilton, an internationally known company for doing care and capacity reports. How many Commissioners here are aware of that report, have ever seen it? Anybody? You've never seen that report? Two hundred and forty thousand dollars in nineteen eighty-four, the county paid for that report. I think you should try to find it and read it. In my working with the environmental field, I became an employee of the Albemarle County Coastine Study. And during those years, I did a lot of research. I read all of the hydrogeological studies that had been done on water. There was a lot of people here that thought that, you know, like our water came from the mountains. We do not have any artesian water in Dare County. It does not come from the mountains. On Roanoke Island, there is this very special aquifer. It's called the Unconfined Unit of the Yorktown Aquifer. On the beach where the county put in the wells, that is the lower confined unit of the Yorktown Aquifer. We don't, the Castle Hanes is down there, but it's poison. We can't use that for water. And our water resources are actually very limited. Now, this very special aquifer on Roanoke Island is recharged right on top of itself, right down there in wine cheese. Every bit of this drinking water that you're now pumping over to the beach and what have you is coming directly from rainfall and what goes in the ground down there in wine cheese. Now, when you allow a lot of development and roads and asphalt and houses and what have you, you're decreasing the absorption area of that land. You're hurting your aquifer. And once you pump that aquifer to the point where you get saltwater intrusion in it, you do not get to fix it. And you are now pumping water from Roanoke Island over to the beach to mix with the water over there so it won't be so expensive to go through the reverse osmosis plant. And the reason is, when you put your wells in, the water in the lower confined unit of the Yorktown Aquifer is recharged in Terrell County. And we are so flat that it takes that water almost a hundred years to get from Terrell County to Dare County. So very shortly after you started pumping those wells, you got saltwater intrusion in them and that water is really expensive to go through a reverse osmosis plant. So any kind of development that you think of doing down in wine cheese, you need to take that aquifer into consideration. It's really very, very precious. And North Carolina joined CAMA, Coastal Area Management Act. And the county receives money from the federal government to pursue a planning process, which includes all the people and their communities. Go to your people, let them choose their densities. Go forward in your planning to promote or protect, as the case may be. Please encourage your people to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Joey Daniels.
Welcome, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all letting us have the opportunity to speak on this this evening. My name's Joey, I'm from wine cheese. I lived there my whole life. I'm here to talk to you today about what went down in two thousand and eighteen when wine cheese's zoning rules were changed without us being involved in the process. I was assured, everybody here, last time we came in this room and heard the planning department tell us that, oh, it was done correctly, it was done legally. Well, maybe it was done legally, but it wasn't done the right way. Just because something is legal does not make it right. Slavery was legal once upon a time in this country. It's never been right. There's a right way and a wrong way to go about stuff. But when people do as much work as they did when they put together the zoning package for wine cheese, it's shameful to ignore those people. I want to ask you, you say you can't do anything about the things that have been started already. Well, you can certainly do things about what's going to happen in the future. You need to, I'm appealing to you to put wine cheese's zoning back the way it was before it was adulterated, without our chance to talk about it. You all are our leaders. I'm not a leader, but I did work for some and served under some. And Colin Powell said this about leadership. If a soldier stops coming to you with his problems, you are no longer leading him because he thinks that either you aren't capable of helping him with his problem or you don't care about it. Either of which is a failure in leadership. I'm appealing to you people to be the leaders we elected you to be. Change wine cheese's zoning back the way it was before. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on it.
Welcome, Ms. Tillot.
Thank you and appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak. I am speaking against this development. As Mr. Woodard described, the Mans Harbor Bridge and how beautiful it is and coming over the bridge and seeing a pretty place and that this gentleman has done. We have worked with Wanchese. We want a pretty place too. And I don't think 60 trailers on stilks on 10 acres is pretty at all. And I want y'all to ask yourselves, would you want to live next door to this? Ask yourselves, put yourselves in our place. We don't want this. I have a 10-acre mobile home park I own with my sisters. We have 18 mobile homes. We rent to the people needing housing. I know, understand the need for housing. I'm involved in it. But this is not what Wanchese needs. And we just beg y'all to please listen to our pleas and put yourselves in our places and change that zoning back the way we had it. And let's look at how we can lessen the impact of these 60 houses. I'm not against building. I want everybody to have homes. But we want a nice home on a nice sizable piece of property and we, you know, six homes on one acre? Are you kidding? I mean, that's absurd, unless it's a condominium or an apartment building, you know? It just doesn't work. So please hear our pleas and please consider us when y'all make this decision. And from what I understand, y'all are not the ones that were in power when our zoning got changed, but y'all are the ones in power who can change it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot.
Jackie Beasley.
I want to speak in kind of way with all the details of what is already spoken.
Welcome, Ms. Emery.
Hi, thank you, Chairman, Board members. And no, Mr. Stewart, you're not alone. There's at least one other person. Okay, it's been over three years pre-pandemic since I was here before you to discuss affordable housing in this area. Unfortunately, since that time, we've had two noes from Manio, CVS, and then down behind the Foodarama. Now recently, we just had no from Nag's Head. Couldn't put the workforce housing there because it was a historic area. Anyways, I guess that I just find it really disheartening. I mean, Mr. Stewart said it best, I can't speak like he does, but I certainly agree with everything that he said. I think that it's important for us to realize that when we talk about having something like this, we're talking about having teachers and nurses and EMTs and all of the people and all the support staff that every single one of us in this room needs on a regular basis, really, right? I mean, if we don't have places for these people to live, we don't want these people to be our neighbors, teachers, nurses, firefighters, police, my goodness. I mean, but, you know, like I said, it's been over three years. It really is time, you know, to move forward and get something started here so that we can have people that can actually support this community. I guess, you know, past time to, you know, talk about it anymore and we just need to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emery. What's the last name?
Callum.
Pardon?
Callum.
Thank you, ma'am.
C-A-L-L-U-M.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that you're being here.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to read you from my little thing because I will lose track of my thoughts. So I want to preface my statement with the fact that I'm a transplant from New Jersey. I've lived here on the island now for over 45 years and I don't feel like, okay, I'm here now, shut the bridges. I'm here to call it as I see it. I've been fortunate enough to have been here during Wanchese's boom with the summer flounder catches and I've reared three children here on the island and all three are directly involved in the fishing industry. My first concern, and they all reside in Manio except for one, my first concern is the environmental impacts of the crazy building phase going on all over, all over the entire island. Where are the impact studies to the wind, the habitats of wildlife, traffic, growth impacts, runoff of the concrete jungle, and the rape of this island by clear cutting? The island was protected by a forest of pine prines right here where we stand. In this 45 years that I've been here, the wind across the entire island has changed dramatically. One doesn't have to be a scientist to feel that. Trees are going to be the sentinels to protect this fragile island against the wind, holding the soil and drainage during the frequent ever-increasing storms. It has been said that if people understood the value of our estuaries, they would protect them like family jewels. What kills the estuaries? Pollens from the concrete. What is being done to stop this clear cutting? With the new developments popping up all over the island, what about the traffic concerns for those of us that actually live on this island? In the not-too-distant past, a bridge was built to alleviate the bottleneck traffic going through Manio from Raleigh. We're almost back to that situation already and now with the new developments being proposed, that will increase the amount of cars exponentially. Wanchese and Manio is facing a dilemma. Change is coming. It's inevitable. It's the face of the change that I am, and I'm sure most folks here would agree with me, is what that face eventually looks like. We want our input taken seriously. I'm not against building. I'm against people we have to elect to watch our backs, taking it upon themselves to play the devil's advocate and push things through their committees with no public discussion. I'm for responsible building with setbacks and studies to preserve what we can. What happened to our motto of preserve and prosper? This is an extremely fragile area. Other fragile areas along the coast have balanced the building issues and have kept the feel of an island worthy of wildlife and inhabitants, who truly appreciate the beauty and have been respectful of reserving a way of life before it's too late. Today is the day. We have to ask ourselves, what kind of place are we leaving for our grandchildren? What is our vision? Will the fish houses be gone in place of the new Pirate's Cove? Will there be no public water accesses? Will the horse pastures be replaced by condos? Will all the horses be replaced by golf carts? These questions are right around the corner. I would like to close with this statement. And the biggest threat to our island is the belief that someone else will save it. So I just want to thank everybody for coming out and unifying and show us your signs.
Welcome this evening, Mr. Bateman.
Thank you, sir. Glad to be here. This time that we have is very valuable, but I'd like to take the first few moments of my time this evening to offer a prayer for Jim and Tammy Tobin. Subtract it from my time, do whatever you choose.
I'll definitely subtract it from your time.
Father God, we don't know what they're going through unless we've been there. Look out for them, Lord. Take care of them. It's in your hands, not ours. Amen.
Mr. Bateman, what I meant to say was I wasn't going to subtract it. I apologize. I apologize.
With that being said, Roanoke Island and the mainland are a man down on representation. Now I realize that all of you are here to represent all of us, but geographically, we're a man down. Mr. Overman, I believe it's your responsibility to represent Roanoke Island and the mainland as well, correct? And our Commissioner-at-Large, Mr. Bateman, who's, again, not related to me, the first young man who did speak, that was my baby boy for what it's worth. Anyway, in 2006, the Dare County Board of Commissioners allowed Wanchese to write its own zoning. They encouraged Wanchese to write its own zoning. And after a two-year process, a model program was brought before the Commissioners for consideration of a fishing village zoning. Wanchese residential zoning is not R1, it's VR1, Village Residential. It's a special designation. The effort that the people put in to do that seems to have been stripped away. Now, I realize that the process was followed appropriately, the advertisement. I have copies of the newspaper. In 2018, you did not include Wanchese and eight other districts. You had to go back in 2019 to include the nine districts that were initially not included. You listed each zoning district by its abbreviation in 2018 when you had the first public hearing and there were nine districts that were left out. Wanchese was one of those. So the premise of having differential zoning, cluster home language in the unincorporated areas was already set when you didn't include them all in the first round. Each of you received communication from me in two different emails at least, because my question was this. If Wanchese had the authority and the responsibility to zone itself at the initiation of zoning in the county of all the unincorporated areas, why do we not have that same authority now? Can we use the same process that you used in 2019 to include us? Can we, as a body entity now, can we use that same process to remove the language of cluster homes from our village? That was a question I sent to each one of you and asked for a response individually from each one of you. I didn't get all responses in the beginning, so I resent the email a second time. And I got responses from everybody, but nobody answered the question. It's being referred to the Planning Board. Tonight, I realize this is not a Q and A session, this is public comments, but tonight, I ask you again, can we reverse it by our own village? You allowed us and gave us the authority to put in zoning that we had up until 2019. Why do we not have that same authority now? I applaud several of the Commissioners here who have been vocal enough to show support for us. And I think one of your Commissioners is being sanctioned for that as a result of his outspokenness. I think that's a sad state of affairs. But anyway, I would like for you to consider allowing the Village of Wanchese to write its zoning back the way we wanted. I think you've been made fully aware that nobody here is happy about what's happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken will be followed by Amy Stone. Ken, welcome this evening.
Mr. Chairman, Board. Sorry to be here under these circumstances, but thank you for the opportunity. A lot has been said and a lot will be said, and I'm certainly not an expert on any of these subjects, but I've got a little background. The pastor did pray about affordable housing. 30 years ago, I was President of the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. That was the topic of conversation, affordable housing, workforce housing. No doubt, we needed. But what constitutes affordable? Part of our problem here is you're hearing a lot of speculation because we're not getting information. There's no communications really taking place. I have no idea what the homes will cost. If I had some idea, it might temper my feelings some, but I have no idea what it's going to be. Are they going to be $100,000 or $300,000? There's a lot of difference. Maybe they would be helpful for affordable housing, maybe not. Maybe it would just be a good business investment. I was the fire chief at Roanoke Island. I have concerns about that. I was at the Village of Nag's Head when that fire swept through those cottages that were built so close together. One burned and the next one and the next one. I don't know the circumstances, I don't know what the structure will be like, but I'm trusting you all to look seriously into this. We do have a lot of wind down here and when those trees are gone, there's going to be more wind. I have concern about the traffic. I was pastor of the church right in the Y of the road. I saw the cars come and go every morning and every afternoon. I believe it's the largest industrial complex in the county there. There's a lot of traffic, could be hundreds of cars. Now, I know they did a study and I know it's not your responsibility, but you are advocate to the state of North Carolina to make sure that the roads are adequate, if there's traffic lights needed, whatever is necessary. You heard talk of the horses and the folks on the sides of the road, that's Wanchese. And so all of a sudden, hundreds of cars could double, who knows? I don't know how many automobiles will be there. I heard 200, but that is certainly something that we have to think about. Somebody mentioned an ambulance. I had a heart attack in Wanchese, friends. They came as quick as they could, but it seemed like forever to me. The largest industrial complex, all these people moving there, we don't have an EMS station there. Maybe this will spear that on and something like that will happen. 10, 15 minutes makes a lot of difference when you're having a heart attack, I'm going to tell you. And we have the greatest risk of an industrial accident and people getting hurt anywhere in Dare County. Now look at us, here we go, we're growing. I think you need to take all those things into consideration as you're making your decision. It's not just our developer. And no doubt, he's got an investment and he has a right to expect a return and a return on that investment. If he doesn't get that, somebody's going to have to pay. But if he does get it, we're going to have to pay. Somebody's going to pay in this deal either way. We just need to pay the right way. Amen?
Yes.
Amy Stone will be followed by Carson Creef. Welcome, Ms. Stone.
Good evening. I am, it's an honor to be here to speak to all of you this evening. I moved to Dare County in 1983. The bypass was two lanes. There was a stoplight at, the only stoplight on the bypass was a blinking light at Collington Road. I came to be a veterinarian. I couldn't find any place to live in 1983. I had to live in the clinic. Nothing has changed in the last 40 years about housing needs in this county. It has just, the can has been kicked down the road. I think this body, County Commissioners, and the Planning Board need to start thinking outside of the box. To build affordable housing in Dare County, I think that ship sailed a long time ago. If you go on Zillow and look to see what prices single wide trailers are selling for back in Collington, it's like $250,000. Now, this gentleman is going to have quite a bit of an investment into this project. I really don't see how this is going to be affordable for employees. Need to think outside the box, like the Keys. The Keys run a bus service to Miami. That's where most of their workers come out of. You can look to Currituck County, you can see the building, the high-density building that's going on in the northern part of that county, they have the zoning for high density. Why aren't builders looking in lower Currituck to build affordable housing? You got to think outside the box to come up with a solution to this problem because it has been kicked down the road ever since I've been here. And now that can is in Wanchese. And we're not the solution to this problem. We can't be. You can, this project can go through and mark my words, it's not going to begin to make a dent. If you take every piece of R1 zoning in all of Dare County and you put cluster homes on there, how many is that going to be? How many houses do you need? How many employees don't have a place to live? Are there concrete answers? I was impressed with the tourist board's kitty that they have, what was it, $15 million? That's been spent by tourists here that can be doled out? Well, how about using some of that money to really put an affordable housing plan together instead of trying to advertise and advertise and advertise to get more people to come here? We've done a great job, everybody in the world. But you can only handle so much, and then you have to solve the problem. This problem needs solving. But Wanchese is not the solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carson Creef will be followed by Kobe Beasley.
Welcome, Mr. Creef.
How are you doing tonight, gentlemen? You know, my family's been here 13 generations. My last name's Creef, you knew that when I walked up. To build a development like this in such a small fishing village as Wanchese, that's one way in and one way out, I believe that you've been able to see the struggles people are having now with the school in first flight, along with the construction in Collington Harbor, when they built such a high-density area back there, taking 20, 30 minutes to get just out of that road in the mornings. If we build something dense like this in Wanchese, you will see the same effect. It's one way in, it's one way out, it's single lane, there's only two places to pass on the straight stretch and up at the mouth entering Wanchese before you get to Skyco. I am worried about the sanctity of our village, simply because of the fact that we have such a close-knit community there, so many loved ones and people we've known our entire lives, coaches, pastors, people who've meant a lot in my life are all sitting in here. We're all concerned about this so-called affordable housing. How affordable is it going to be? Because if it is yet so affordable that anybody can live there, what guarantee do we have that it's going to be doctors, EMS individuals, people that are going to help and benefit our small fishing village that we've worked so hard to protect over the years? Where is our guarantee on that? You cannot tell me that by renting out these places, I know, I've read the articles, they're going to purchase the properties, build the houses, he's going to own the houses, and he is going to rent the houses with an option to sell. They're rentals. With no guarantees, they're going to be long-term or short-term. There's no guarantees who's going to be in these houses. To hear a couple of individuals talk about our workforce is going to be inheriting these homes, I think is laughable at best, because there's no guarantee who is going to be in these houses. Obviously, we have a small community where kids often travel up and down these roads on their bicycles, skateboards, and even horses. We have to think about not only our village as far as workforce, but as far as the quality of life that our children are going to have, because the woods that I grew up in, the place where I was born and raised, place where I learned how to walk, talk, and pray, these places mean more to us than anything that any developer from Crestville is going to understand. We will see it through, no matter what y'all rule on, we will see it through, and we will always do the best to take care of our community, the children in it, the people in it, in our churches, our community centers. We're always going to do what's best by our people. And as elected officials, I would hope that you all do the same. I voted for many of you. I'm a lifelong Republican, and I'm not ashamed of it. Voted for a lot of you guys, hoping that if a decision like this ever had to take place, that y'all would make the right decision, not based on financial or fiscal rewards, but based on the elect body here that puts y'all in these positions. I would pray that you make the right decisions, and I believe in you. Thank you for your time.
Kobe Beasley will be followed by Lindsey Key.
Welcome, Mr. Beasley.
Thank you. My name is Kobe Beasley. I'm 15 years old. My family's roots run back to the 1700s in Dare County. Walker Park is named after my great-grandfather. The Washington-Balm Bridge is named after my great-great-grandfather. I've lived in Wanchese for as long as I can remember. My parents own property in Wanchese and Collington. They have decided to raise me and my siblings in Wanchese because of the neighborhood vibes and sense of community that Wanchese has to offer. I know my neighbors, and sometimes my parents get a phone call about my activities before I have a chance to get back home. I attend youth group at both churches in Wanchese. I also deliver meals every month to the elderly and needy. There are no sidewalks in Wanchese, so we use the roads. So, the roads are used for walking and to ride bikes, scooters, skateboards, horses, and even golf carts. I love my village. I'm blessed to call Wanchese home. I'm asking you not to allow Cluster Homes in Wanchese. It'll change my community, it'll change the way of life for myself, my friends, family, and neighbors. Thank you.
Lindsey Key will be followed by Craig Parker.
I'm sorry, what's the name again?
Lindsey Key.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have had the privilege of growing up in Wanchese for my whole life. I grew up right down the road from where this development is going to be placed. I live on ER Daniels. I can go either way and get there. I drive every day by the slot. My concern with this housing development is how our emergency services are prepared to serve this area. Several years back, when I was a child, I was probably about 12, I had an accident that had knocked me unconscious. Of course, like any good parent would, they call 911. As I was in and out of consciousness, myself and my parents could hear the ambulance circling around Wanchese. They made it to Wanchese very fast. They rode around town for 20 minutes looking for our house. We could hear them. We were on the porch waiting for them. They ended up having to be waved into the right direction of our home by neighbors in the community. My concern is that the emergency services are not equipped to handle this new development. I know of others who have had similar experiences of emergency services not being able to locate addresses in Wanchese. And so, my question to you all to consider is, how can our community expect our emergency services to be prepared for this new development? Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Parker will be followed by Chetty Parker.
Mr. Parker, welcome.
Good evening. I want to first thank you all for moving this meeting until 5 o'clock instead of 10 o'clock this morning to accommodate all of our needs here. My name is Craig Parker. I live at 341 Old Wolf Road, about 150 yards south-north of this project. For a long time, I've wanted to come up here and talk to you guys about ambulance service in Wanchese, and tonight, I'm going to get a chance to do that. And then, after that, I'm going to get you all off the hook and make everybody in this room happy about this project, okay? But, you know, right now in Wanchese, if you get hurt, the thing is, you can get in your car and go to the hospital before the ambulance gets there. Now, once, if you wait for an ambulance, now, once they get there, they're great people. They do great work. I'm not going to take that away from them. But there's something wrong with the 911 service in our county, because I was at the Family Dollar store in the parking lot one day a year ago, when an old guy fell over backwards, called the ambulance, which was right around the corner, and I had to talk from the phone for 10 minutes to get that lady to just bring an ambulance around here. I could have put the man in the truck and took him around there myself a lot faster. But in Wanchese, we do need an ambulance. We've got a fire station, we need an ambulance. Now, to make everybody happy and get you all off the hook, I've got a good deal for Mr. Alexander. You're going to love this. The county's got 25 acres back here. You know, you can put 150 homes on that. The county also has the old landfill site down in East Lake. How many can you put there? I'm on your side, ain't I? Plus, I'm going to make all of them happy. You're going to make them happy, and y'all going to be off the hook. Mr. House there don't look too happy to. Mr. Bateman, he's happy, because I'm not related to him either. But, no, in all seriousness, you know, everybody comes up and they're talking about affordable housing, they're talking about workforce housing. I know what he's trying to build isn't really affordable type of housing. The county does need that for affordable housing. Everybody talks about, oh, we've got to get more doctors, we've got to get, you know, this, we've got to get that. But, you know, the laborers are what we don't have, and they can't afford, you know, I know at one time, there was a man in Banns Harbor. He was renting house trailers for $100 a month per person to a bunch of Mexicans, and some of them house trailers had three shifts of sleeping in there because of how they worked. There might be 20 people in there. So, he was making $2,000 a month on that. But that was affordable housing for them people, and they didn't care. They could afford it. It's not that type thing that we really need here. I understand we do need affordable housing, but that's something that the county is going to have to get with, the planning board and the commissioners and the county in general is going to have to come up on that. This that he's building, I don't think he's figuring that's going to be affordable housing for migrant-type of workers or general laborers. They can't afford a $300,000 house. So, I think the county is the one who needs to do their homework and look for a builder, somebody like Mr. Alexander maybe, that would be willing to do some sort of a housing project in East Lake or on 25 acres back here that the county's got. I'm sure you can get a real good deal with them on that. So, y'all helping man out here. Thank y'all. At least made him smile.
Chetty Parker will be followed by Lorraine Tillitt.
Ms. Tillitt?
My name is Chetty Parker of 341 Old Wolf Road. My dad was a past county commissioner, and I know that he had a lot on his shoulders with the job of helping people. Wanchese is a very loving, close community. Kids on bicycles, kids walking, kids riding horses on the side of the road all the time. Wanchese is full of kids. My husband and I and other families in Wanchese have lost a child very suddenly. We do not want that to happen again. It would be a lot of traffic on Old Wolf Road, and we do not need that. As it is now, we can hardly bike out of our driveway. We live almost right across the street from where it's at. Please consider our hearts, and I know that you can help to keep Wanchese safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine Tillitt will be followed by Sandy Barrell.
Ms. Tillitt?
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Lorraine Tillitt, and I live at 188 Old Schoolhouse Road in Wanchese. I want to thank the commissioners who acknowledged the concerns and sent the cluster housing provisions back to the planning board to review. That was the right thing to do, and we were very happy about that, and we believe that our concern and speaking to you all and writing the letters aided in that decision. So, thank you very much. I'm asking that the board delay the vote until the planners hear from the citizens and make their recommendations through that process. We are hoping that we will, that you will amend the zoning ordinance to reflect the will of the people who elected you to represent us. And I want to add another note. We hear so much about workforce housing and affordable housing. You all could show leadership and set the example to pay the county employees and the workers here in the EMTs and the emergency service people enough money to be able to live and also encourage the businesses to do the same. They struggle, some of them work two jobs. You all mentioned that you have advertisements for employees, new employees coming in. Do not make the salary that the older employees and the directors make, and they have second chances about coming here, or they have to go way up, way up in Currytuck or way over to another county, and then they have those expenses. But Dare County's teachers and emergency workers simply do not make enough money to live here. And another evidence is that the cluster housing is overwhelming, and the people, the citizens of the communities and the neighborhoods do not want cluster housing. We want single-family homes on residential lots, where there's yards, there's play areas, and communities are built. Little neighborhoods are built. These places are protected, and the fabric of communities are grown. And this is why we are the way we are. It's been all little villages all over for hundreds of years, and we've grown, not by gigantic developments thrown among single-family people. And the lifestyle changes, the fabrics changes, and the communities will be destroyed forever. And that's what we don't want to happen. And I'm just asking you all to just rethink what you're going to do here, take into consideration all of our desires and our plans to continue. And beans, we're going about memory lane. I would like to direct your eyes over there to our first Dare County Board of Commissioners. That was my great-grandfather. And I am really proud of all the people in the whole county of Dare. A Wancheseer was selected to lead the first board, and I'm very proud of that. And I wonder what he would be saying, because right down the road from where I live, and I live on the property that was deeded to my grandmother, to my father, and to myself, we've had three owners in 130 years. And two doors down from me is his land, and you know what? Cluster housing can go in there. And what would that do to all of the residents on Old Schoolhouse Road and the community building across the street? And we love our community building, and as I had said before, it's the only schoolhouse that was deeded to the members of the community. Three men went to the Board of Education to buy that building when they sent the children to Manio to school. And, you know, we love our community, and you know we love our community. I am so proud to be, to Wanchese, to live in Wanchese. I was proud to work for the county. And we're talking about the caring capacity study. That came in about 1984 and 1985, and Booze Allen came down here from Washington, DC, and they came to my office, because I was the only one in the planning department. For six years, I was the only one. And they came down here, and they wanted to investigate the possibilities of doing a caring capacity study. And I did help them and set up all the people that they were supposed to interview. They worked for years on it, and they put together a beautiful document, and I don't know what happened to it. I have no idea, but I know all the towns participated in it, and we need to bring some of those old documents back. We need to look at our land use plan. We need to look at our ordinances. And I'll say this one last thing, I think every new Board of Commissioner that comes on board from now on should be required to look at the zoning and the plans of the community in general, the whole county. Thank you for my time.
Sandy Barrell will be followed by Ralph Barrell.
Sandy, what was your last name?
Thank you. My name is Sandra Barrell, and I live on 154 Pine Road in Wanchese, and I've lived there for 45 years.
Thank you, Ms. Barrell.
I would like to read the 2009 Dare County Land Use Plan to everyone here that the Board of Commissioners adopted in 2009. The future of Dare County, of Officials have spent a great deal of time, money, and effort in preparation of the latest version of the Dare County Land Use Plan. Considerable debate and discussion have gone into the development of these policies and maps that will be used to guide the land use decisions over the course of the next several years. This section refers to Wanchese. Recognizing the need for use, specific zoning to regulate development patterns, the village undertook an effort to establish these regulations, which were adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 2006. The regulations established 11 zoning districts that promote the traditional land use activities existing in Wanchese while keeping with the coastal village's character. The population is almost entirely year-round residents in a residential development of single-family homes with strong ties to the commercial fishing and the boating industries. All the development activity must be content with the limitation associated with the low elevations and the poorly drained soils. During the State of the County event that you all held in January of 2023, Mr. Bob Woodard and the county commissioners stated your new theme was caring for our community, a nurturing place where we all can live and grow. 60 houses the size of single-wide mobile homes on stilts on 10 and 1/2 acres, no yards, no green space, no place for children to play, no overflow parking for guests, the land that will not drain after a rainstorm, the main road entering and exiting the development on a blind dangerous curve, not to mention a bus stop on this dangerous curve, letting children off certainly does not sound like a nurturing place where we all can live and grow. Why doesn't the county use the 25-plus acres that you have right behind this building? You already own it. Build it there. That land is perfect. It's close to the grocery stores. People can walk. There's a bike path. There's downtown Manio they can go to. This seems to be more suitable for where you call workforce housing. I would like to ask the board to reconsider and look at this and vote no, because this will change Wanchese forever. And I thank you.
Ralph Barrell will be followed by Pixie Weskot.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I had a whole thing to go through, but you've heard a lot of it already, so I'm not going to go through all of it. I'll save it for the planning board meeting tomorrow and keep them late. As I heard all these comments tonight, you know, Mr. Stalling said, well, you can put it in Wanchese and show these people how Wanchese really is. Well, the problem is, is once this goes in, it won't be Wanchese anymore. That's the problem. This vote you take tonight will change Wanchese forever. This is not a building that at some point will come obsolete and be torn down. These houses will be there forever, and this is a forever vote. Will change the fabric of Wanchese. There is no doubt, and I think most of you know that. So, you know, as we stay here and you hear all these things, and I'm surprised, not surprised, but happy, a lot of the younger people have come out tonight to speak, because it's really their village now. I've been in Wanchese, as my wife said, for 46 years. It's their village. We had our time there. The zoning worked well. I hope we can change the zoning back so it works well for them. And I do agree with them. This doesn't have to be adversarial. Mr. Alexander has paid a lot of money for plans, engineering, legal fees, and other things, and he should be reimbursed. We do things in this county for a lot of different reasons. You budget $4 million for the dredge. I'm a proponent of the dredge. I thought it was a great idea. Dredge the channels, keep the boating industry going. You pump sand on the beach. $18 million for a Buxton. $11 million down in Avon. I'm a proponent of beach nourishment, always have been. Who wants to come to a beach that there is no beach there? So I'm asking you tonight, I hear you can't vote no, but what I'm asking you is to ask Mr. Alexander, would he be willing to negotiate? And we will pay for that, too. We pay, like I said, for other things to help communities. Let's pay for this to help Wanchese. We don't ask for a whole lot. We don't ask for bike paths and everything else that people do ask for. And, you know, the last thing I will say is that I'm doing this, like I said, for my grandchildren. My children live in Wanchese now, and I'm hoping my grandchildren will live in Wanchese. You know, I told you I'd worked for the town of Nag's Head for 38 years. People would tell me, soon as we hit the line at Nag's Head, we knew we were in Nag's Head. We could tell the change. Well, it's the same thing in Wanchese. When you turn down that Wanchese road and you go into the village of Wanchese, you know you're in Wanchese. And that's how we would like it to stay. I've seen a lot of changes through this county, and I would hope for you to please take all of this under your consideration when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Weskot will be followed by Britten Shackelford.
Welcome, Ms. Weskot.
Hello. Some of the points I was looking at have already been covered, so I'm going to go off on a tangent here. Everybody keeps saying they know Wanchese. Well, let me tell you about Wanchese. If you have a problem, if somebody breaks their leg, you get a cancer diagnosis, the casserole patrol is on your porch. You don't cook dinner for the next two weeks guaranteed. If you need more, it'll be arranged. It's arranged. By the way, the prayer chain has all the news. So if you need to know something, call someone on the prayer chain, say, how's this going along? How's so-and-so feeling? They know all about it. But over and above that, they know each other. They don't know each other like, hi, I'm in apartment five. They know their children, their grandchildren. They know their dogs, for God's sakes. I mean, they've been brought home. Horses have been brought home. Everybody knows everything. And when they're helping each other out, which is 90% of the time, it's just a very unified thing that I can't explain anyplace else. Maybe Kitty Hawk Village might be the only other place that you can find that in this county right now, because Hatteras Island is scrapped. I mean, that's just been developed to the point there's nothing there. I mean, it's overloaded. They got to lock their doors. They got to take their keys out of the car, things that we don't do in Wanchese, and nothing happens, okay? It's just crazy trying to explain to you. Then we have somebody like Bubble Live, say, who we all loved. He gets sick, and we get wicked tuna coming in there, lock, stock, and barrel, helping out, helping with the fundraising, donating money, doing the whole enchilada. We used to have the seafood festival. It belonged in Wanchese. When we had the seafood festival in Wanchese, they started with a blessing of the fleet. They had a memorial service for all the men and women lost at sea ever in the Wanchese fishing community. Now it's a commercial venture in Nag's Head. It's very successful. They make a lot of money. It's not the same thing. And I don't think people who don't live in Wanchese understand what everybody's talking about when they say we are a community. We are a community. And to infuse us with all this, I just don't even know what to call it. It's, have you seen the pictures? They are mobile homes on stilts. They're side by side by side. The pictures are deceptive, because like, we can get three cars in here. They're all subcompacts. Maybe you can, maybe you can't. The peripheral of the entire property is where the sewage is. Well, that says something about what they think about us. It's not encased inside of their thing. It's a whole peripheral. They're neighbors, the very neighbors that weren't informed of this to begin with. It's just, the schools are overcrowded. We have no ambulance. The fire trucks say they can't turn in there. We got a fire chief that said, it's cool, let her go. I signed it off. The people who drive the trucks say they can't get in there. Now, if we have a disaster of that magnitude after this place is built, someone's going to be looking for some answers, and that's going to be a sad day in Wanchese, a sad day in our county. I want you to consider everything that I've said and my colleagues have said. Everything that's been brought to your plate has got to be considered in this decision, because it is not just a stroke of a pen. Thank you.
Britten Shackelford will be followed by Robin Mann.
Britten, welcome, Ms. Tillitt.
How we doing, guys? I want to read something that I've read before to y'all, but I don't know that it's something that is first and foremost on y'all's mind. Now, this is from y'all's letterhead. This is from the county, okay? It says, "The Dare County Board of Commissioners serve the people of Dare County. At each meeting, the commissioners remind themselves of their public service mission by placing the following question at the top of their agenda: How will these decisions impact our children and our families?" Y'all can get this yourself. It should be required reading. Y'all should read it to yourself before every meeting, because these are the families that y'all are representing. These are the people that have voted y'all in with full trust. Many of us have been dealing with a lot of these particular issues because we felt like the rug was snatched out from underneath us. When you take the time and the effort to govern yourself, to come up with something that's common sense, that everybody can get along with, and I know at the point in time it wasn't, there were people that were very aggravated with other people in the community. But when it was all said and done, it was worked out, and it worked fine. And it's odd to me that the people that you hear asking you to take care of their employees really makes me wonder if they're paying their employees enough to live here. This is a very expensive place to live. Bob, I've talked to you about common sense things. They do it in Newpernou Shipyard. They do it all over the country. You go to a place that would love to have a little economic driver, build a big parking lot, run a bus service, have a central location, one or two places. It'd be a whole lot easier for an employee, I don't care whether you're Sun Realty or whoever you are, to pick your employees up at a central location. But when I talked to you, Bob, you said nobody wants it.
That's right.
All of the municipalities don't want it. Well, you know what I tell the municipalities and the people who live in the municipalities, the people who haven't governed themselves, who've allowed y'all to do it? It sucks to be you. If you're not going to allow a common sense, thinking outside the box, something that's going to be truly affordable, there are people that commute every day from Washington to Rel, Hyde, I mean, people that commute hour and a half. I talk to them all the time. You know what they tell me? I said, hey, look, you know, what do you think about affordable housing? What do you think about workforce housing? They're like, foul that. It costs too much to live in Dare County. I can live out here, have a home, have a yard, have, you know, have something. Say, what's an hour? What's an hour and 15-minute commute? I lived in Miami. If I didn't leave at 4 o'clock in the morning, I was going to be an hour and 45 minutes commuting. That was just part of it. I don't think that it's your job, your responsibility, like I told Jim Tobin, when I was invited to a GOP meeting, when he said, we've gotten $34 million from COVID. We're going to use it for workforce housing. And I stood up at that point in time, and I said, it is not the government's responsibility to provide or be involved in housing. That's socialism.
Robin Mann will be followed by Nan Willis.
Robin, good to see you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and all the citizens. Good evening. My name is Robin Mann, and I've been a long-term resident and business owner in Manns Harbor for many years, as I was fortunate to marry Paul Mann, whose family was born in Manns Harbor. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the original 2007 zoning committee members, of which I served on this committee for Manns Harbor and Mashews. And I believe there are several members from that committee here tonight with me. The zoning committee met weekly for over a year after Wanchese had completed their zoning. We communicated openly with all of our citizens within our community. We held several public open meetings at our community building so that we could listen and answer questions of our neighbors. We worked closely with the Dare County Planning Office staff to complete the zoning ordinance for Manns Harbor and Mashews. Also, prior to its final approval, the proposed zoning materials were mailed out to all of the property owners. The toughest part of the 2007 zoning process was convincing our longtime, older generations that zoning was going to protect them from the type of housing and businesses that we decided were not compatible with our small-town community atmosphere, such as high-density housing and zoning was necessary in order to protect our vital natural resources for generations to come. For us, protection of our way of life and protection of the natural resources available have sustained our families for many generations. And I'm going to go off my script just for a second, because I remembered something. Before we started our zoning planning, our zoning committee, we had a developer look at Manns Harbor. If y'all recall, right at the foot of the Manns Harbor Bridge, where we are so fortunate right now to have that wildlife refuge area for the boat ramps for our commercial fishermen and our recreational fishermen. Our civic association, we advocated against that development, and we won. And we are so proud to have what we have there now. It's such a better use of that land. Unfortunately, somehow, in 2018, an amendment was made and approved for our community zoning that we had worked tirelessly and diligently to set in place. With that change, we were grouped within all of unincorporated areas of Dare County. We chose back in 2007 to be unique from all other areas and remain a small, novel, protected community, especially because Manns Harbor does not have a designated sewer or water system. In addition, the added strain on our volunteer fire department and first responders, we kept all of those influences into account when planning our future. Our approved and acquired zoning has been taken away from us without any community involvement. There was no public hearing held at our community building so that a Dare County representative could explain to our many generations and citizens how this zoning addition would affect our future and change us. A small notice in the newspaper is not sufficient for us. In light of all the comments that you're hearing tonight, and as an evident lack of advanced communication, that this added zoning clause, Section 22-31.1, cluster home development being discussed here tonight, was approved and amended to our existing community-based zoning ordinances and for all of unincorporated areas of Dare County in 2018, I request, please, that you do not approve this cluster housing development that is passionately opposed to Wanchese. that you do not approve this cluster housing development that is passionately opposed by all the citizens of Wanchese and some of Manns Harbor and some of Manio here tonight. In addition, I request on behalf of our Manns Harbor community that you, well, you told me you can't place the moratorium, but you consider undoing that cluster housing development that came about and any request for the Manns Harbor zoning, including the MHA and the MHB, until this issue can be given further consideration by the residents and taxpayers of our community. For many of us, we and our families, we've been paying taxes in this county for many generations, and we deserve to have a voice and a vote for zoning modifications. Thank you.[645.83][645.83](APPLAUSE).
Nan Willis will be followed by Allison Beecham.
I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, and I'll turn it over to the county manager.
We're at Nan Willis to be followed by Allison Beecham.
Ms. Willis, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, and I appreciate you giving me this time to speak. I am a resident of Wanchese, but not only am I a resident, but I am a native of Wanchese. My family go on both sides. My husband's and mine goes back for generations after generations, and we have a lot of the stones to show in Cudworth Cemetery. I have lived here most of my life. My dad was in the service for over 30 years, the Coast Guard, and he is also from Manio. And he did what everybody did back there. They joined the service. And he served in the Coast Guard for 30 years and then retired and came back here and built a home, which my daughter is living in at the present time. I have another son and his son that's here right now. I have great-grandchildren that are here also. This is a family unit, like so many of us have down here. It's generation after generation after generation. One thing that I have noticed that has really saddened me a lot is I like history. And not too long ago, I was reading something about the lost colony on Facebook, and they were starting up the communist season. And I thought about the time that my dad used to be in the lost colony when he was living down here. My dad represented Chief Wanchese. I guess it's left us now to be Chief Wanchese because our ancestors are gone. But what I want you to listen to is, a long time ago, when this whole Eastern Seaboard became into business and the United States came to be, and all the people traveled from Europe to come over here and settle in the colonies, they drove the Indians away. And when a government was established, the government emplaced rules and regulations on the Indian land and drove them even further west. Today, I have the feeling that's what y'all are doing to us. You are trying to run the natives out by being greedy and allowing people to put in what they call as affordable housing. I'd like a definition of that, please, if you would. And so, in turn, you as the government and you as the people that we have elected to represent us, you are not representing us. You're voting your own self. If you were representing us, you would not be voting for cluster housing. My heart is broken. My soul is defeated because of what you have done. I'm here to tell you, I voted for many of you, and this is what I get in return? Please, I promise you, think about this long and hard. Do not make a decision tonight. This requires more than tonight. So, please, Commissioners, do what we put you in office to do. Please take this. Do not vote on it tonight. Bring it up at a later date. There's much more to be said about what's going on.
Allison Beecham will be followed by Lynn Davis.
Hi, good evening. How are you? Thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you tonight. I also would like to speak on the quasi-part. I didn't know where the sign-up sheet was for that, if someone can help me out with that part, if we can get to that.
Allison, would you repeat your last name, please?
Beecham.
Thank you.
I live on Brinkley Drive, which is directly beside where this proposed development is going to go. I have a lot of opinions about it, but for right now, I'm just going to speak some facts. This is off of the Planning Board website and the Commissioner website. It says, I'm not going to read all of it, I'll just do some highlighting that I did. "To avoid undue concentration of population, to preserve the traditional family fishing atmosphere while protecting the environmentally sensitive coastal wetlands and other unique features of the Wanchese Village. Low vehicular traffic flows, low impact of development, to secure a comfortable, healthy, safe, and pleasant environment for those who live there." These are on the website. Anyone can read these. I'm just curious as to how a cluster housing got into our zone for this because it's polar opposite. A cluster housing development goes against every single thing that I just read off of your website. I want my children, I have a little four-year-old daughter, and I would like her to have the same opportunities that I did growing up in Wanchese. I felt very safe. My parents could let me stay out till the streetlights that we don't have come on. But I was able to ride my bike. We kind of avoided the curve that we're on right now because it's kind of scary. It's scary for me to pull out of there with my kid in the car. We can't ride our bikes out of that road. You can't see anything. People come around that curve really fast, and it's a very sharp curve. Just what I'm asking tonight is, we depend on y'all. We elected y'all to make these decisions for us, and we hope that you make the right choice for Wanchese.
Lynn Davis, followed by Nancy Gray.
Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir. I live 612 Old Warf Road. I live next door to what Mr. Brad is proposing to do. I have some issues with it. Going back, I moved into Dare County in 1962. My grandparents bought a motel, called the Buccaneer Motel, on NC 12. I moved away in 1974, I believe it was, '72, met my wife in Virginia. We moved back down here in '78. We've been here ever since. We bought the house of Wanchese 31 or 32 years ago. We fixed it up. We've done a lot to it. I wanted to say one thing. Any of y'all that want to have this cluster homes next to y'all, I'm sure if you talk to Mr. Brad, he'll let you build them there. I've looked at the plans. I've got two septic tanks that are going to be within 100 feet of my house. You've got four septic tanks that are going to be within 20 feet, 25 feet, maybe a little bit farther, away from a ditch that goes back into the sound. Now, I don't know what to say. I'm not much on understanding and everything, and I know you guys are doing your job. I know y'all didn't know that this ordinance or the zoning in 2009 and '06 have been passed and things have gotten changed, and this is where we're at now. But I really don't want to see this go in there, not like it is, because it's really going to be a modified mobile home place in there. Now, I've let Mr. Brad park his equipment on my property because I understood from him that he was actually, and maybe I misunderstood him, but I thought he was building the same thing J.D. Johnson built. He parked his equipment on my property. I own three lots on Brinkley Drive, 612 Old Warf Road, 35 Brinkley Drive, and 121 Brinkley Drive. We cleaned them all up. When we first bought, on your website, if you look at 35 Brinkley Drive, it looks like a rat's nest in there. We've tore all that down, cleaned it up, leveled it, planted grass seed in it. We cut it once a week. Did the same thing to 121 Brinkley Drive. I had to leave a trailer there because I have a building there, so I had to leave a trailer there. Okay? So, all that being said, really consider what y'all are doing. I think you're doing it unjust to Wanchese, not just because of me, because you listed everybody's talk here. That's all I got to say. Thank you, guys.
Nancy Gray will be followed by Brimage Silver.
Welcome, Ms. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to have time to make our public comments. My name is Nancy Gray. I live in Wanchese. I'm a former business owner in Wanchese, and I'm here to encourage the masses. Back in the late '80s, I was part of a group named Legacy that was created to fight offshore drilling. And at the time, it looked pretty hopeless. The United States government had sold leases to ExxonMobil right off of our coast, and they were going to drill. And believe it or not, many of our citizens were for that. And part of our objective was to educate people about how having offshore drilling would change our county for the worse. And Wanchese was to be used as their staging facility, and it would basically knock the fishermen and sport fishermen out of dock space. So, anyway, it seemed like a very hopeless situation, but it didn't happen. And why is that? Because our elected officials got on board, and they saw the bigger picture. What do we want Dare County to be? We wanted it to be a place where tourists would like to come, not an industrial area for offshore drilling. And I plead with you to look at the bigger picture. What do we want Dare County to be? Why do people come here? For the charm, for the feeling of getting away from it all. If we have a four-lane highway going down the middle of Roanoke Island, that's not going to be your charm that people are drawn to. So, I just ask you to look into the future a little bit because I think we're at a very special moment in our history in that we can plot our course for the future.
Brimage Silver will be followed by Mikey Daniels.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Brimage Silver, and I live in one of the residential zones in Wanchese that you have made this cluster improvement in. So, first thing I wanted to say is that at the February Dare County Planning Board meeting, I spoke about the fact, as a Realtor, knowing that, as you have defined in the language in the ordinance, that long-term housing is to be greater than 30 days or 31 days, that traditionally, in most of real estate knowledge in North Carolina, it's closer to six months, at least six months. If you just do a simple search to determine what a vacation rental property is in North Carolina, you will see that it goes all the way up to 90 days. So, anything 90 days or less. And so, then I also wanted to remind Mr. Alexander that he made a statement, which is recorded in the minutes from that Planning Board meeting, saying that he would be willing to tack on a deed restriction, that any properties that were to be rented in there would be constrained to a six-months or greater period. I also wanted to mention that he did, and just to remind him, that he did state that he would, it was not his intention to utilize these as vacation rental properties for weekly rentals at all. I would like to note that one of the only two people that have spoken tonight in support of the particular cluster home portion of the ordinance that we're discussing tonight, actually, in my opinion, as has a fiduciary relationship with Mr. Alexander, as having been a manager for the rental program that was helping assist him with his cluster development in Nagseth. They no longer are the rental property for that cluster development in Nagseth, but they were in the beginning. So, also to mention about, this may be more a planning board meeting moment for tomorrow, but David Hines did mention the desire to see him present a homeowners' association document of some sort or plan. Again, a simple search throughout North Carolina to see what other counties that have cluster home ordinances will say, is that they, most of them, or a lot of them that I researched, actually include having a homeowners' association plan presented at the beginning of the entire application process. So, I think it's a little bit late to be adding that in, but I think it's probably a must, considering you're putting 60 properties, homes, on one 10-acre property. So, also, for the September 2018 meeting, when Beth Midget made the motion to move forward for this ordinance, she stated that it was an agreement to Policy 4 in the land use plan. And I would just like to say that, in my personal opinion, that it's actually against all four of the policies, the land use compatibility objective policies that are listed in the plan. First and foremost, y'all mentioned over and over again the importance in the vision statement of the preservation of the coastal heritage and retaining the characteristics of this coastal heritage we all love and are standing up and speaking for tonight. But, so, like in the Policy 1, it lists the preservation of that heritage. I can't even, there's no need for me to even begin to try to go into, everyone else that has spoken here tonight has really put forward how that is not going to be preserving the heritage of our county. And number two, it says that, talks again about the coastal heritage and, and actually, hold on, excuse me, it states about how it needs to be reflective of it, I believe is the word. And I can personally say that the only thing I think that this will be reflective of for the preserving that coastal heritage would be the flooding that it's going to cause to all the surrounding areas.[1675.22][1675.22](APPLAUSE). So, and then Policy 3, it's encouraged to be on a scale that is consistent with existing neighborhood patterns of development. Everyone here is speaking to the fact that this is completely inconsistent with all the neighborhood patterns of development. And then finally, number four, that it addresses housing needs of the year-round population. Workforce housing, to begin with, is supposed to be, as I understand it, actually when an employer puts housing available on its property for its employees. I know, we all know what we want and what we need for affordable housing in this area, but it's obvious that this is not it.
Thank you.
Mikey Daniels will be followed by Will Brooks.
Mikey, welcome this evening.
You're glad to see me, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
You miss it, don't you?
You miss it, don't you?
It's good to see y'all. My wife says I'd like to talk a lot. I can't help it. But I appreciate y'all, but sometimes you get on a board like this here, sometimes you make the wrong decision. We all make them. I've made them. You're going to make them. But when you find out that you've made a mistake, you want to go back and fix it and change it, you know? You know, when I was just on the boards, and two people got off and they were going to make me the chairman. You know, I'll never forget it. I was scared to death. I said, "What am I going to do? I don't have to talk to them people. How this is going to be? What am I going to do?" So, I got down on my knees by my bed. Nobody, never told anybody that, but I said, "Lord, I don't worry. I'm at. I don't know how to do this here. This is your..." This is your, this is your kingdom. This is your land. This is your people. Help me to make decisions that will glorify you and be fair for everybody." And you know what? That's how I made it. That's the same thing, you know, you've got to have, you've got to have, you know, Jesus loves me. He loves y'all. He loves all these people. We have to slow down. We have a little bit too much people down here. We need to start thinking about how to do it, how to endure with less people. You know, I've got some ideas about water quality, and I'd like to talk to y'all about it, of what we can do and how we can do that. Work with Curry Tuck, but get somebody else to go with us, get some money. There's, for 2008, there's never been nobody changing any things. Nobody was doing anything. I was on the Marine Fishers Commission, but they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't do nothing because they didn't have any money. That was their excuse. And I said, "This ain't going to go back without me doing something with it." And that's what I want to do. I want to work with you guys, help you guys, talk about what we can do, where we need to go at. You know, I even, I remember already, but I went up to the, looked at the Steel Pier one Saturday, drove up there by myself, and Saturdays are close. I drove further up there, tried looking, knocking on people's doors to get in there to say, "I need to park my truck. I want to go walk down here." Finally, she said, "You going to do what?" I said, "Yes." "Come on." And I went in there and went down there, looked at it, climbed up the hills, and looked at all the stuff that's going on there. They've got, from ocean to sound, probably two miles wide, with nobody on it. Anybody said, "You'll never get that done." You don't know until you try, do you? And that's what we got to do. These people here want to see some changes. They want to see fish. You know, they want to see people can go crabbing. Listen, this county's in bad shape. Y'all don't want to admit it, but it is. You don't, you're not out there where I'm at. You don't out what I see every day. When I come down to that seafood park down in Wanchese, my heart goes out of me. You know what it is? There's no fishing boats there no more. There's all yachts. They're building John, what's his name ever? I can't think of his name now, but here I've got it. He's my best buddy at basketball, but listen, and I know y'all been here a long time, but, you know, thank you, but we need some help. And, you know, don't be worried about saying, "Hey, I made a mistake." Let's get it over with, okay? And we will step back and say, "Yeah! Go, go, go!" All right? Thank you very much.
Will Brooks will be followed by Dylan Silver.
Mr. Brooks, welcome this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and I just thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here. I'm not necessarily here, so I do live in Wanchese. I love Wanchese. Been there since 2011, 2012. I mean, I really don't want to see this type of development either, but that's not really why I'm up here to talk about. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, y'all are not our enemy. You're not. We're thankful for you. Ms. Brad, we're thankful for you. You are not our enemy, and us as the people of this community, we're not the enemy either. One thing I've realized is that when tensions arise, it's easy to forget that we serve a king in his name is Jesus, and that our government is put in place by him, which is y'all. And I don't say that in a manipulating way. I'm not up here to try to use Jesus to get you to vote a certain way, because I don't believe that's correct. I just ask that you consider a clear conscience in everything that you do. That's all I ask. And if you would allow me, I would love just to say a prayer, blessing y'all, this meeting, any decisions made, and the people in this meeting. Is that okay?
Absolutely, Mr. Brooks.
All right. Father God, I just thank you. God, we glorify you, and we welcome you here this evening, Lord. God, I just praise you for every person that's come up here who knows you, Lord. I thank you for everyone who doesn't. And I just ask that we know that you are such a good daddy, and that you are the reason we exist. And I just pray, God, for our government, for our leaders, Lord God, here locally before us now, and I pray for our leaders that are surrounding us, the leaders that are running our country, God. So, Lord, I just bless them. We honor them, God. You said, "If we want peace, to pray for our leaders." So, Lord, we are praying for them now, Lord God. And I just thank you for this day. I thank you for this time. I thank you for acknowledging us as your sons and your daughters, and that we just thank you, God. We give you all the glory, all the praise, and we bless your peace here tonight. We welcome your peace, and we welcome your heart in this matter, Lord. And we pray that we seek you in all that we do, and just to know your will for all things, in Jesus's name. Amen?
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Dylan Silver will be followed by Jade Midget.
Welcome, Ms. Silver.
Thank you. My name is Dylan Silver Ray. Thank you, guys, for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. I currently reside in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm a property owner in Wanchese, and I grew up there. I drove five hours today to come, just to share my feelings on this topic and let you know that I strongly oppose the cluster homes that have been proposed for Wanchese. I believe it would be detrimental to the culture of our village, and several facts and opinions have been shared tonight with everyone here. I have a one-year-old and a two-year-old, and we plan to raise them in Wanchese in the near future. Our children deserve a community where they can grow up in a safe place and be kids. The time, energy, and efforts that the community members put into designing plans for Wanchese And I ask that y'all please respect our efforts to preserve the heritage of Wanchese and the place that we're proud to call home.
Jade Midget will be followed by Catherine Fagan.
Ms. Midget, welcome this evening.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I just, I agree with everybody who's opposed so far. I'd just like to add a couple things. I live at 53 Cooper, which is at the, at the back end of the cul-de-sac from the development that's taking place. And I've heard mention of making the cut-through road off of Brinkley. And I just would like to say that that would directly affect where I live. It's cutting more trees, more, we're cutting down more to provide a road to be gated for the fire department, as I understand. But who's going to have the key to the gate? Are we going, what if our fire truck's in Manio, and we need, you know, is Manio going to have to meet with Wanchese to get the key to the gate to get there? Also, Brinkley's a one-lane road. I mean, I don't know if you have, any of you have personally driven it, but it's gravel. It was sand. They just recently added some gravel to it. It's one lane. There's a deep ditch that's also, I've witnessed, and over the years, I've lived there for eleven years. I've seen a fire truck in the ditch. I've also seen wrecked man pull a couple semis out of the ditch. I've, a couple of our friends have been in the ditch as well. But what I'm saying is, there's just, you know, it's not a, it's not a good road to hold, you know, having access for extra traffic. It's small. I have a child, he's 11. He goes, he rides a scooter down Brinkley, around to the old schoolhouse road, by the fire department, to get to the Christian Academy where he tends there. I also heard somebody say that, you know, we need housing for firefighters and nurses. Well, we don't even have paid firefighters in Wanchese, for one. We have no doctors and nurses. Most of us have to travel other places to go to doctors. So, I mean, you want us to house everybody, but we're at the bottom of the list. We have no ambulances. We have, I don't, I mean, we have hardly anything. We have no sidewalks. But y'all want to cut our stuff, our woods down, to take care of everybody else, just like we're pumping our water up the beach. Also, back to the cutting of the trees for the access street for the fire department, they're going to have a six-foot fence, as I could tell of the little bitty plan that was provided for everybody to see. It was very hard to read. We, you know, had to have it blown up at Staples so we could understand a little more. But, you know, like, are they, that land is low. I've walked it. It's swampy. It's wet. Are they going to bring in dump trucks and dump trucks of dirt? What's that going to do to the surrounding properties? What's going to happen, what's going to happen if we have a hurricane and all the trees are gone, and we have water standing everywhere? Those trees drink up a lot of the water that we have off of the road. That road curves in. You cut those trees down, where, what's sucking the water? Where's all this water going to go? Brinkley is a state-maintained road, but it's not maintained. My neighbors up the street have been kind enough to use their own private tractors to maintain the gravel and the holes and the potholes on that road, just, just for us to be able to go any, over five miles an hour down it. Are they going to fill the ditch in for the access for, off of Brinkley for the fire department? How's that going to work with the six-foot gates or fence? Are they going to have another access gate there with a key? Are we going to have to have two keys to get in for the fire department to save them? Are firefighters going to want to even live in a house that's not fire, you know, if I was a firefighter, I wouldn't want to live 15 foot away from, you know, I mean, really? What kind of people are we going to have living in this place? It's not going to be firefighters. It's not going to be doctors. They did a traffic study also in March or February, but what about July, August, September? We have baseball coming on right now. You have, we have all the traffic from people coming to Walker Park. About, how about the sewage? You know, do we have an emergency plan for that? Can we see an emergency plan? Do we, have we had an engineer look over the property plans? You know, what's being done to protect us if there is a disaster with the sewage? Or, and finally, I want to close with this. I'm hearing a lot of people, like my father, who's a Daniels. He was part of the Wanchese Fish Clan. There's several of us. He's ready to sell out and move because y'all are changing what was, what it was. It's not that anymore. I find, I feel like if y'all let this go, and you keep allowing everything to be cut, and you're going to, you're going to lose the heart of this, of this community. These people, well, I'm not saying everybody will, but I'm saying if you've got 25 cluster houses around your house, you might change your mind, too. So, thank you for your time.
Catherine Fagan will be followed by Judy Cage.
Catherine, welcome this evening.
Hi. Good evening. You know, that's a hard act to follow, because what you have here is the heart of the community being ripped out. And you have people who have come here to plead for the folks up there to please do your job. Don't just represent somebody with some money or the same names all the time. Let's represent all the people. And I know when I came up here about the project behind my house, that you found a way to do it anyway. The zoning is supposed to be noticed. It never was noticed. The people before me didn't have it noticed. You're supposed to put a zoning notice of change next to the property that's going to be changed. That was never done with mine. But let me tell you what these people are going to be living with. They're going to be living with what I'm living with now. I live with a cacophony of construction equipment beeping up continually all day long. I have the road being put in. All the trees are down, so we're already having flooding, already having flooding. The people down Daphne Lane are still flooding. That's going to happen in Wanchese. I'm sure there's nothing I can do about where I am now, but you can stop this. Back up. As Mr. Daniels said, admit a mistake, back up, and start redoing things. You've got to stop these trees, because you know when that hurricane comes through, it's going to take out all their homes. It's not going to have any trees. There's not going to be any trees soaking up the water. There's not going to be any trees stopping that wind. So, what's it going to do? And they're, and I sent to a couple of you, I sent you a URL for something to watch on YouTube that talks about a situation like this. So, you've got these cluster homes, which, as somebody else said, it's nothing but a trailer park on stilts. But you don't own the land. And what happens when you don't own the land? What if you have to move? Are you going to be able to move that house? Probably not. And what do people with trailer homes do? They end up leaving them. They lose everything. So, it's not a young family that can come in and start building equity and then sell out and have something to build on. They're not going to have that. The only person who's going to reap any benefits from this plan is Mr. Axelrod or Alexander and his crowd. That's all. This community is going to lose. They're going to lose big. They're going to lose the quality of community they have, and they are going to absolutely lose environmentally what they have. Just the evidence on the aquifer alone should have shut this thing down. And even if the zoning allowed it, when you heard that there's not going to be sufficient water and what's going on with the water, it should have shut it down. You need to be representing the people of this county, all the people, not just the same old names all the time. You know, you put things out and say, "We want other people to, we want people from the community to take part." I look on those board vacancies. I've applied for many. I don't get chosen for anything. I see the same old names all the time. And it's those people who get what they want. They get to put 56 new houses up behind my house, a cul-de-sac in my backyard, and they're going to get to board a cluster homes with nothing but trailer parks on stilts over there, unless y'all do as Mr. Daniels said, back up, admit that maybe this has to be rethought a little bit more. Another woman said, "Don't make a decision tonight. There are lots of things that haven't been considered. We cannot have more traffic. We don't have, island only has so much space, only so much space." And what are you going to do? Put a four-lane highway down, down the middle of the island? I'm just asking you, I'm begging you, to please represent everybody, and please study what this trailer park in the sky is really going to do to this community. Thank you.
She's a school nurse, and she commutes from Manio to Carroll County every day, and so she had to leave.
Okay. Allison Flynn. Allison?
Ms. Flynn, welcome.
Hello. Thank you very much. My name is Allison Flynn. I'm here on behalf of the North Carolina Coastal Federation. First, thank you all very much for being here tonight and listening to the many concerns and comments. We just really want to highlight and request that the commissioners closely examine the stormwater plan for accuracy in consideration of development, not only this development, but future development in Dare County. This is pertinent in preventing chronic flooding that could threaten public safety, health, and welfare. Furthermore, I would also like to highlight that the North Carolina Coastal Stormwater Program only regulates water quality impacts from stormwater runoff. The state program is not designed to protect people or property from being flooded by stormwater. With this, or this project or future projects, it is the county's responsibility to ensure that this does not cause flooding, problems for residents, not only on proposed development, but immediately surrounding, and any adjacent highways. Stormwater management systems designed for a project like this is likely going to cause persistent unacceptable flooding issues. And that is all we have at this time, but thank you again, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
That's everyone that I had signed up. Is there anyone else like to speak that hasn't spoken? Could you check over, is anyone over there that would like to speak that has not spoken?
Excuse me. You can remove the name of the board from the hearing. I said my comments already, and so I will not be speaking, so you're looking so long to that.
No one wants to speak, Ms. Midget? No one wants to speak, is it?
Seeing no other hands, and that would close the public comment, Mr. Chairman. And at this point, we could move into the quasi judicial hearing. Just to let everybody again know what we're doing, this is a trial, if you will, and this is an opportunity or where the applicant has the burden of proof to come in and prove to the board that they've met the terms and the conditions of the zoning ordinances. The board by law can only consider the information they hear at this quasi judicial hearing that they're about to start. So only the evidence presented here can be used by the board to make a decision tonight. If the board is, has expressed an opinion or made a decision before they came in here tonight, before hearing the evidence, then they're not allowed to hear the evidence. Again, the law requires them to, this is just like when you go to trial if you're on the jury. You can only consider the evidence that you heard as a juror. The board sits as the jury tonight and can only consider the evidence that they're going to be presented here in just a minute. With that said, we would call Noah, if you would come up, please.
Hold on just a minute, Noah, if you don't mind. Commissioner Bateman has a comment he'd like to make.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this hearing. And if you would let me have a few seconds to explain why.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
This is a quasi judicial hearing. From the onset, I've had, had an opinion. I voiced that opinion. When called by, from members of the public, I voiced that opinion. I reached out to the developer, Mr. Alexander, and voiced my opinion to him. I did not know at the time I was wrong to do that. I actually thought I was trying to do something right. I was wrong. It was my actions, my actions alone. Make it so I can't participate in this hearing. I apologize to y'all. I apologize to my board. I didn't know I was doing wrong.
I will make a motion to recuse Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second? Seconded by the vice chairman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a motion signified by saying aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we'll bring our praying director forward. Noah.
Agent Chairman, Commissioners.
I have two questions quickly and then if you would just give the board a brief overview of why we're here. One is, there was a packet, the statute says you can present the packet of evidence that you've received in your office. And you, have you presented that to the board?
Yes, sir.
And have you also presented that to the applicant as the statute requires?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you would just, in a few sentences, state why we're here and when you are completed, then we return the hearing over to the applicant who has the burden of proof.
Mr. Brad Alexander has submitted a special use permit application for a cluster home development located on Old Wolf and Wan Chee's in the VR District. Cluster homes are permitted as a special use subject to the reviews of a quasi judicial procedure. And that is what we're here tonight to, to do.
All right, thank you, Noah. I will call on the applicant's attorney. You state your name, please.
If it please the board, my name is Lloyd C. Smith, Jr. And I along with my partner Cliff represent the petitioner, Area Construction and Development, Inc. And we call as our first witness and ask that Mr. Gillum be placed under oath.
Mr. Chairman, man, I kind of customarily prefer you turn to stand. I promise you can hear me wherever I am in the building.
We, in order for us to hear and have it recorded, it'd be appreciated if you would step to the podium, if you don't mind. Do we have a mic for him? Yeah, we can get an extra mic for you.
Yes.
Would you state your full name, please, sir?
Noah Hardy Gillum.
And where do you live?
Mania.
And how are you employed?
By Dare County.
What is your position with Dare County?
Dare County Planning Director.
And what are your duties as Dare County Planning?
To administer the ordinance at Dare County.
Okay. And have you had occasion to become involved in this project known as the project at the Old Wolf Road?
Yes, sir.
And what's your involvement been?
As the planning director, the application for the project was submitted to me for my review before it was presented to the planning board at the preliminary forum and then here tonight for a quasi judicial procedure or review. Commissioner. Oh, your phone.
And did you in fact receive certain exhibits?
Yes, sir.
And have you marked them, I believe, one through?
I believe it's.
Eleven?
I believe there's two on my list. I don't know what the 11th would be.
Hearing notice posted on Dare County website?
Oh, yes, sir, 11. Yep, sorry.
Okay, does that help? All right. So you came up with 11 exhibits?
Yes, sir.
And that includes the application from the petitioner, the letter from the property owner, the site plan, the house plan, letter from George Wood?
Yes, sir.
What was the purpose of putting that letter in the exhibits? Mr. Gillum?
The letter from Mr. Wood?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Wood, after the property, or after Mr. Alexander had the property surveyed, we had received notification from the Army Corps of Engineers that there was the potential for wetland soils on the property and that the applicant, Mr. Alexander, had somebody perform a wetland delineation on the property. And that's what Mr. Wood's letter states, is that there are certain pockets of wetlands that it is believed they were fillable wetlands through Army Corps permits.
And exhibit number six appears to be the Dare County Fire Marshal comments?
Yes, sir.
What was the purpose of soliciting those comments?
Typically, in any type of review of a site plan of this nature or a subdivision, the Fire Marshal chairs this, makes review to make sure it meets the compliance of the North Carolina Fire Code.
And what was his conclusion?
That in review of the layout of the plan, that it met those requirements.
And you've attached copies of Section 2231.1 and Section 2227.7 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And what was the purpose of doing that?
The purpose of that was so that the board, in their review tonight, would have the ordinance in front of them that listed out the requirements that a cluster home would have to adhere to.
And has each of those requirements been met, in your opinion?
Yes, sir.
And the other three exhibits or notices concerning notice that you posted on the property, notice of the hearing, and notice posted on the website, is that correct?
Correct. Some of the notices were to the applicant, to the property owner, and then to the adjoining property owners.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we wouldn't move to introduce as the petitioners exhibits, the exhibits that have already been produced to the board, one through 11.
Absolutely.
So they're of record now. Mr. Gillum, looking at the site plan, the requirements for cluster home developments require some setbacks?
Yes, sir.
And does this project meet those setback requirements as shown on the engineered plan?
Yeah, 2231.1 requires that a cluster home meet the applicable setbacks for the zone in district which it's in.
And does it do that?
Yes, sir.
And it also has requirements concerning the amount of coverage of the entire track, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I believe it's 30%. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And does this cover less than 30% of the entire track?
Yes, sir.
So in that sense, it also complies, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Finally, have you had occasion with the Fire Marshal to examine the site drawings concerning the roads and the ability of emergency equipment to get into this project?
Yes, sir. His comments provided, there was never a question of access. The things that he listed in his comments were the secondary access being keyed to the Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department's knockbox system, which is a key that they had to access gates in this situation. But, you know, through the process of him reviewing it and conversations with him, that it met those requirements.
Even without the secondary gate, it meets the requirements, does it not?
I can't answer that. That would be a question for the Fire Marshal.
Okay, he's here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And while we're talking about this, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me just one moment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gillum, this is a version of the site plan, one of the site plans. You recognize it?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to mark it as petitioner's 12, right there.
The evidence is for the board.
For the board.
We can't turn it that way or they can't see it.
Yeah.
Can you also, could you step over here and talk on the same mic like we're seeing it do it?
Yes, sir.
Is this the gated area that we're talking about on the secondary road?
Yes, sir, off of Greenfield Road.
And explain to the board how that would, who would have the key to that?
That would be the Roanoke Island volunteer by the bar.
And is that standard procedure here?
Yes, sir. I've seen it in other situations where there's a gate on a property that's key for the Fire Department for emergency personnel.
And this is the main drag in on the proposed building, is it not? Building development?
Yes, sir, Old Wolf Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Those are my questions of you.
Thank you.
Chairman, you're going to ask for other questions?
Sorry.
Do you have other questions of, of Mr. Gillum?
I do not.
Okay.
Does the board have questions?
Yeah, that's the way I'm going with this. Does the board have any questions of our planning director?
No, do not.
We reserve the right to ask later, right? Right. We reserve the right to ask.
You can recall it. Yes, the recall.
Yeah, we'll do a recall. All right. Thank you, Noah. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's anyone here that represents the community, but if there is, they would have the opportunity to ask questions as well.
Is there, is there an attorney here that represent the community? He would have an opportunity to question Mr. Gillum? Okay, let's move on. Mr. Smith?
You need to be sworn in. Danny need to be sworn in.
He does.
Yes.
Would you state your full name, please, sir?
Bradford Davenport Alexander.
Mr. Alexander, I'm going to ask you to-
If you'd speak a little bit louder into the mic.
Yeah, just a little bit louder into the mic.
Bradford Davenport Alexander.
And where do you live?
I live in Crestwell.
I'm going to need you to lean into that mic.
Lean into that mic.
Like you may.
Raise it up if you can.
You need to.
There you go.
That sound better?
Yes, sir.
Would you tell us what your relationship is with the petitioner, Area Construction and Development, Inc.?
I am the owner and CEO of Area Construction.
And does Area Construction have any type of license issued to the state of North Carolina?
Yes, I have unlimited commercial license.
What does that mean?
It means I can build residential or commercial with unlimited money value placed on it.
And who is the qualifier for the corporation?
I am.
You have to stand up. I will stand back so you speak loud enough so everybody here can hear you, okay? All right. And you're familiar with the project, the village at Old Wolf Road, right?
Yes, I am.
Familiarity with it to start with.
I'm basically the designer with house engineer. We put it all together and tried to do something that we thought that the Dare County as a community needed for housing for employees.
And I've shown Mr. Gillum what we've marked as petitioner's exhibit number 12. Are you familiar with that site map that we've had blown up so we can look at various aspects of it and other maps?
Yes, I am.
And who was that prepared by?
House engineer.
And where are they located?
They're located in Southern Shores.
And are they a firm of professional engineers?
Yes, they are.
And whom did you deal with there?
Rick House and David Neff.
And there's been, already introduced before the commissioners, a statement from the landowner concerning your ability to have this hearing, but did you also get an option, an extension on the option for this property?
Ah, yes, I did.
I'm going to show you, Mr. Alexander, what I marked as plan, excuse me, petitioner's exhibit number 13 and ask you if you recognize that.
Yes, I do.
And what is it?
Offered a purchase agreement and the amended due diligence.
Okay. We're going to mark them separately for ease. Mr. Manager, we introduce them to you through you.
Because you've already offered.
I'm going to, I've already offered 12 of them. Moved to offer 13. And then I'm going to show you what I will mark as 14. Can you tell the commissioners what this is?
This is a amended agreement for the due diligence where the procedure has taken longer than we originally thought, and so we had the due diligence period extended.
Is that item 13?
This will be 14, yeah.
What was item 13 again?
13 was the actual original option, purchase agreement.
I got you. Option purchase agreement, okay.
And this is an extension of the same.
It's the extension of the same.
And when is it extended to?
The date on it is until June 16th of 2023.
Now approach again. Mr. Alexander, if the special use permit is issued, do you or your company intend to go forward with the purchase?
Yes, we do.
And what do you intend to build out there?
We are going to build 36 two-bedroom houses and 24 three-bedroom houses.
Number 15?
Yes, I do.
And can you tell the commissioners what that is?
The top part is the actual render, or the blueprint of the house plus the elevations of each of the houses. And the bottom part is a rendering showing the, looking down each cul-de-sac what it will look like at the completion of the project.
And how many three-bedroom houses will there be? And how many two-bedroom houses will there be?
There will be 24 three-bedroom and 36 two-bedroom.
And how will these houses be built? By, I mean, what kind of material are they going to be built out of?
These houses are all going to be two-by-six construction for the walls are shotgun-style houses. They've been referred to as trailers, but they are far from trailers. We build anything from three-bedroom to 20-bedroom houses on the outer banks, and they will be built to the same specifications of what we build those houses.
And I don't have anything to point with right now, but right here, there appears to be a design. Can you tell us what this is designed off?
Rather than the long shotgun-style house- Rather than the long shotgun-style house, rather than just having a solid wall down the side, I decided to put the gables at each end so it would give some character to the houses. And so you'll see the three windows with the transom windows over top, and they will all be facing the main road going into the development with the reverse plant, full plan on the opposite side of the road. So as you're driving through the neighborhood, you see this side of the house. That just gives the house a lot more character.
The ordinance itself requires that there be a number of parking places for cars for, I believe it's one for each bedroom. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
And how are these houses designed to accommodate that requirement?
Every house has the capability of two parking places underneath of the house on non-pervious concrete surface, and then two, two cars on the exterior in the front of the house. That will be a rock gravel drive.
So you intend to comply with the ordinance as far as having two impervious places for each vehicle as required?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the request of the potential discussion at the zoning board meeting concerning covenants on the property?
Yes, uh-huh.
What does the term, as you understand it on the ordinance, for long-term, as the ordinance is presently written now?
It's 31 days or more. And someone spoke to what I said at the planning board that I would be willing to put in the, the sale of the property, that it would be six months or more, and I have no problem with that. And it's been a lot of statements that has been said that I am planning on renting all of the properties, and that's not true. I do retain the right to rent some if they don't sell as fast as I want them to. But they will be, before we start, there will be pre-construction prices placed on them to start to sell it. And if they all sell, they all, we'll sell all of them.
And what will be the pre-construction price?
I think we're going to start at $299 on two bedrooms and $329 on three bedrooms.
I'm sorry, could you? Let me have some order, please.
What was it? Say that again.
Mr. Alexander.
$299 on two bedrooms and $329 on three bedrooms.
Are you aware of any requirement?
Three.
Three bedroom, yeah.
$329.
Are you aware of any requirement, the ordinance, that you price these houses at any particular level?
No, there's not anything that I know of. We're just trying to get it in the ballpark of, to my knowledge, it will be the cheapest price in Dare County of any two- or three-bedroom new construction at the present time.
And how familiar are you with construction throughout Dare County?
I'm very, very knowledgeable. I'm very knowledgeable with it.
There's a limit on the size that these houses can be, the limit being 1,200 square feet. Do you know the size for the two-bedroom houses?
It would be 960 square feet.
And how about the three-bedroom houses?
It would be 1,120 square feet.
I want to return for a minute to the construction of these houses. Of course, this is just to get the special use permit, but do these houses have to be built to any other standards if the va, if the special use permit is allowed?
They have to be built to the same standards of any other house in Dare County.
How about wind speeds for coastal counties, which I believe is 140 miles per hour? Is that correct?
Has to be built to 140 mile an hour wind code.
Are you familiar with the lot coverage on this plan?
Yes, I am.
How many acres approximately are there out there, Mr. Alexander?
Approximately 10 and 1/2 acres.
And what's going to be the lot coverage with the asphalt and the houses?
It will be less than 30%.
And I'm going to ask your engineer these questions, but in your opinion, do these houses all meet the setback requirements and the distance requirements of this county's ordinance as it's written tonight?
Yes, they do.
Who will own the houses up until they are, a certain number of them are sold, the unsold lots, I should say?
Area Construction will.
Is there, is there a number when, according to other laws, that it has to revert to some type of association?
Well, at, at 51%, up until that point, Area Construction will be responsible for all maintenance of everything in the neighborhood at 51%. At that time, we have the right to turn it over to the neighborhood association.
Those are my questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I believe our board probably has some questions. I'll, I'll maybe kick it off myself.
Okay.
Mr. Alexander, I believe it was item 12 that showed the eastern part of the property with a gate. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, what, is this considered a gated community then?
No, it's not.
Then why do, why do we have to have a gate?
We, that's not actually an access for the community. We just put that in there extra for the fire department in case they needed a second entrance coming in for emergency situations. And then it will be knocked, knocked boxed with a key that is universal to all the fire department.
I got you. You've answered this question, but I want it on record again. It's been said numerous times, mobile homes on, on stilts. A mobile home, as far as I know of, at least in my dealings over the years, is a, pretty much a metal structure type of, of unit that's pre-manufactured. You have stated that you will build these, this is, this is nowhere, no way a mobile home on stilts. Is that correct?
These are not mobile homes.
Right. You will build these, just like you frame a regular beach box, for lack of a better term. Is that correct?
They will all be stick-built houses.
Stick-built houses, just like, just like we do all over the county.
That's correct.
Okay. I believe, according to the conditional use permit, both the two-bedroom, 960 square feet, that's roughly 40 square feet, below what's special use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
1,124 three-bedroom is roughly 80, 80 square feet below what the 1,200 square foot number is for special use permit, correct?
Yes.
Firewalls. Will there be firewalls in between these units?
No, there will not be firewalls in between units.
And that's not?
That's not, that's not.
That's not code?
No.
Will these units be smoked, will they be hardwired for smoke detectors?
Yes.
And they will be with back, backup battery operator?
Yes. Like I said earlier, they'll be exactly like the construction of any other house building Dare County.
And I believe you said that this was going to be an HOA.
Yes.
And you had the right to turn it over once 51%, I believe.
That is correct.
Is completed. Mr. Smith asked you the question. I was concerned about the size of the units. Man, I'd like to have one of them 960. I had a house in Kill Level Hills for 37 years. I lived in it. It was 720 square feet. I would have loved to have one of them 960s. The cost to purchase, I think, is, is reasonable. What, what are the rents, you mentioned you had, you potentially had some possibility of rents. Do you have an idea right now what those rents might go for, for the two or three bedroom?
Based on rental property in Dare County and the surrounding area here, they would probably be somewhere between $1,800 to $2,200 a month.
Folks, if you will allow me, they gave you the respect. I'm asking you to give them the same respect. If not, I might ask the sheriff to ask you to, to be removed. Now, we're having a quasi judicial hearing right now, and I expect you to respect those that are up here now, just as they respected you. At any time, Mr. Alexander, you, you, other than, you have, let me back that up. You have promoted these from day one as market-rate housing, have you not?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. You have not stated that this will be essential living, affordable living type housing. You have stated from day, day one, it's market-rate housing, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
There's a lot, there's lots of rumors floating out there of what this neighborhood is going to be, and 90% of them are false.
Right. Were you, you've, you've, I'll push it a little bit further. You've been gracious enough to say that you'd be willing to do a six-month lease. Were you, would you so far as much as say that you'd consider an annual lease?
I would.
All right. On the east side, and it was hard for me, as well as our residents out there that have seen copies of this too, Mr. Smith, Mr. Alexander.
Do you have any closer?
No, they ain't going to help me because I can't see anywhere. But thanks for the off. On the east side, it doesn't appear that it is much vegetation on the northeast and south sides of that property. Is that correct? I know there's vegetation, but there's a mixture of trees, there's a mixture of shrubbery.
It should be basically the same the whole way around.
It is?
And our objective is, we want to plant a buffer zone that when it, when it gets in and gets grown, it's going to be, as well as the neighbors on the outside don't want to look in, and the neighbors on the inside don't want to look out. So we are going to make a buffer zone that takes care of that.
How about the existing trees on the lot that are the closest to the ingress and egress?
Any of the, the trees that are in that buffer zone that are native trees, oak, water oaks, or things like that, other than the tall pine trees, we're planning on leaving a lot of those in that buffer zone, as well as planting new trees in that area.
I got you. I'm going over my notes, and I know, Mr. Alexander, I'm going to have some more questions, so bear with me if you don't mind.
No problem.
In the interest of time, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners now if they've had any questions of you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman?
Just a few, just saying, working.
Yeah. Just a few. Going back to the, the issue regarding the setback, and Noah may need to come up and, and address this, just to get it on the record regarding what the standard setbacks are, the rules and ordinances on that throughout the county. I think they're, in a prior discussion, they run from 10 to 15, eight, to eight feet in places. Noah, if you would, if you would-
Hang on, hang on. One witness at a time. You call Noah back.
Yeah, you got to call, you got to. Yeah, we, we have to, we have to ask Mr. Alexander his questions now. We can call Noah back.
No sweat. There's been some discussion about flood control and drainage, and I understand that you still need to get a state permit on that.
Yes, I would. We can't do that.
What are the capacity in, in terms of your, pardon me, your, your design of this project right now? What's, what's the capacity of the swales, basins, and collection areas versus any kind of normal projected rainfall?
That's a question you need to talk to my engineers about. I mean, I know some about the, the depths of some of the things, but they have all of the calculations and everything on that, so.
Do you have any idea of what, I mean, are they, I'm trying, what I'm trying to get a, a feel for is what the capacity of them are.
You're going to call the engineer, right?
Yes.
We're going to call the engineer.
Here's actually, did he design?
Once again, once again, I have to go to the back of the class.
And also, Mr. Commissioner, some stormwater narratives contained on the map, that's one reason I wanted to try to move it closer. It's very hard to read, but it's there.
Well, let me try again. You've probably got an expert that's coming up to talk about sewage and wastewater, too. Isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, like I said, go to the back of the class and let somebody else ask you a question.
You have anything, Commissioner Countess?
My, I live in Hatters. I've lived there 60, my 63 years, and my biggest concern with this all along has been the homeowners' association, because I can tell you two cluster home developments down there that were cluster home developments for essential workforce for a very short while. And then they became Airbnb and rented out seasonally to kiteboarders and wind servers and stuff like that. What kind of assurances can we have? And you might not be able to answer this, and maybe this is something that the docs and the bylaws will have to be drawn up by the homeowners' association, but I'm asking you if it is your intent and in the spirit of workforce housing that this will be for people, for healthcare professionals, for law, for law enforcement people, for cleaners, for people who make our economy go. I, I would like some assurance.
100%. If I had had any thoughts of making it any other way, I would not have offered to make a year lease. But by putting that in there, I feel like that takes care of that and prevents that from happening.
Well, I think you're asking if you sell the property to John Smith, John Smith then starts selling.
The same, the same rule will apply to them.
That will carry over with the sale.
And then will carry to the new owners. I will put that in, I will put that-
That's what bylaws are.
That's what, that's what the bylaws are for.
I have no problem, because if I, if I own them and I rent them, that's how I would want to have it. So anything that I sell will have that same thing in it.
Gentlemen, if I might intercede here, not in an argumentative fashion, but you have the power to add certain conditions to the usage when it's granted, and we're perfectly content to make that a condition of the use, that it's got to be a year-long rent, whoever owns them. Somebody else buys them.
Perpetuity.
Yeah, we want to-
Prevents it.
Perpetuity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
And again, this may be satisfied by experts. I was looking, and I'd heard during public comment, this thing is going to flood, it can't drain, there's no infiltration, this is going to be really bad. I've been studying the drainage maps and the drawings, and it appears that the calculations show a storage requirement of 46,000 cubic feet. I'm reading off the chart, compared to a provision for storage of over 90,000 square feet, with the addition of grassed swales not included therein, which would add additional absorption and/or infiltration of stormwater. It's prepared by house engineering. I presume they are licensed engineers and do this for a living?
Yes, they are.
So I also heard testimony that, or not testimony, public comment, that the calculations were completely inaccurate and incorrect.
That is not correct.
Okay. Second point. I understood that there was some concern and question about ingress egress traffic on the turn, and that sightlines at the entrance, not the security gate that will be for emergency vehicles, but the main entrance in and out.
Yes.
Would be unsafe because it's a part of that sweeping turn that sweeps around Old Warf Road. Has any traffic study or analysis been done?
Yes, and I have two of the people from the traffic study here tonight that will be questioned.
So we'll be hearing from them?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Mr. Alexander, you said that in this previous questioning that you never stated this was going to be affordable housing, was going to be market, market-rate housing?
Yes.
Is that correct?
It's going to be as affordable as it can be in Dare County.
Okay. I was just asking, because on your special use application, use project description, affordable housing. So I just wanted to make sure there's a clarification.
Yes.
That we're all on the same page.
Yes.
All right. Since the houses are so close together, and I've been in the fire service for 30 years, are you considering residential sprinkler systems for those houses?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Would you consider doing that?
That would be something that I would have to look into.
Do you have any estimate of what additional cost would be added to the $299 and $329 rough estimates you provide?
That's what I'd have to look into, find out. I'm not sure how much it would be for, for a two or three bedroom. I know on a bigger house, I'm, I'm building a 20-bedroom right now, and a residential sprinkler has been quoted anywhere from $40,000 to $55,000.
has been quoted anywhere from $40,000 to $55,000, so. Yes.
Okay. Also, it's also been brought up several times before, from some of the people in the community, wondering, with your, with your design, everything you have laid out, obviously, we're gonna have families there with children, and obviously, your lot covers, does not cover the entire lot.
No.
Are you planning on putting a play area for these children that are not in a swell, they're not in a retention area for stormwater, it's separate from everything else, and be high and dry for them to play in?
There, there is repair areas at the back end of each one of the cul-de-sacs that is highland, that is not in the swales, that, that's six different areas of the area that could be considered to be play areas.
Okay. All right. And also, I've got some other questions that'll do for your, your, your engineer when he's available. I'm, I'm good with that so far.
All right, thank you. I think that'll do it for right now, Mr. Alexander, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alexander, I forgot to ask you, are any of these buildings gonna be more than 40 feet in height?
No, they're not.
And regarding the emergency services, just so there's no confusion with the commissioners, this gate was something that was requested to be put there by the fire marshal.
Yes, it was.
And the main entrance is here?
Yes.
So, and have you, has the fire marshal requested you to do named each street that comes in there?
Yes, that's correct.
And have you and your engineers, more of the engineers than you, actually studied and are gonna follow his weight recommendations for emergency fire equipment coming on to this property if necessary, 75,000 pounds?
Yes, all roads will meet those criteria.
Those are my follow-up questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You have somebody else you wanna call?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ask if the.
Yeah, I will. Does the, well, I thought the public had to have representation.
Is there someone?
Is there someone in the audience that representing the homeowners that have any questions of Mr. Alexander?
Say it one more time.
Are there, is there a representative in the audience that represents the community, have any questions of Mr. Alexander? Okay. Continue, Mr. Smith.
Where are you in?
But it, it's been broached. I mean, it's like fricking.
Who are you, sir? Just give us your name.
My name's Rick House with House Engineering, I'm a professional engineer.
Ah, so you've prepared all these?
Yes, me and, me and my.
Nathan.
My employee, Dave Neff.
Got it, thank you, sir.
Mr.
She did.
Mr. House, you live where?
In Kitty Hawk, in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
Tell us about your educational background, please, sir.
I went to Virginia Tech, and I got a bachelor of civil engineering in 91, worked at Norfolk Naval Shipyard for seven years as a structural engineer and a naval architect. I worked underneath a professional engineer for the four years I needed to before I could take the test, the professional engineering test, that is. Took that test and passed it in 99, and opened up my company in May of 99.
Do you hold licenses in several states as a professional engineer?
I've got my national council record, which allows me to practice in 38 states, but I have active licenses in eight states, including North Carolina.
What are the other seven?
Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, Texas, Oklahoma, Mississippi, I think? Oklahoma, for sure. It's written somewhere around here, but I gotta put my glasses on. But eight states right now, active licenses, including Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina.
We've previously introduced before the board, through Mr. Gillum, some drawings. The site drawings for this project. Did you and your associates or employees do those?
Yes.
And are you familiar with them, and can you help us with them?
I can.
Okay. I'm gonna move this over here to your side, so you can have the mic in front of you as you explain part of this.
I mean, I can.
Well, if you go over there, they're not.
Just speak into the mic, so everybody can hear you.
I can see from here, and I can ask you anything, you can ask me anything you want.
Why don't you just swap microphones?
There you go.
Please, just, yeah, you guys are killing me.
Can you hear me now?
Tell us how these site plans were first developed. What was the first thing that was done?
The first thing we looked at is decided the site needs to be over 10 acres. Meet the setbacks, try to figure out how the traffic circulation would work, how the fire, you know, fire and emergency services and trash pickup and things would all work. Building layout, parking, things like that. And we've come up with this for a very efficient use of this property. It was very, there's not many wetlands on it. I think it's less than four tenths of an acre of wetlands that we're planning on.
I think it was like 4,000 square, yeah, which is less than 1/4 of a feet.
Something like that.
Nationwide permit.
And, uh. Given that, we've come up with this plan for you guys.
Microphone.
Mr. Smith?
Where's the main entrance on this?
Main entrance is right here.
Can you just describe the way the subdivision layout for the commissioner?
It, it comes in with a 22-foot wide entrance, 22-foot, all the way to the back where we've got room to turn our emergency vehicles. They can back in, pick, come in, front load, the dumpster's at the very end for trash pickup. They can back into one of the, the finger roads, as we call them, and then turn out and leave. There's six finger roads coming off the main road that break the property up, so we can put 66-foot to 76-foot long buildings in, 16-foot wide.
Is your understanding that these are gonna be stick-built?
Yes, sir.
And what, talk, tell us about the, the roads themselves. What are they gonna be constructed of, and what weight bearing will they have?
Yeah, the, the roads will be acceptable, built to road standards, state road standards, to carry a 75-foot, 75,000-pound wheel load. They'll be made out of a base course of rock, 6 to 8 inches, and then a I-2 asphalt. And then the driveways for, for each one will be gravel driveway for imperviousness of that.
And have you also planned concrete under each of the structures themselves?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We've got concrete underneath each structure, at some form or fashion, to add parking, at least two parking spaces under each one, two in and two out.
And is that require, is that one of the eight requirements to qualify for this special use in the VR?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And this may be a little unfair asking you there, and I may have to recall Mr. Gillum, but are you familiar with the setback requirements?
Yeah, I don't know, top of my head, if you'd like to see them. In the VR, C2 zoning district, there are 25 in the front, and 10 on the side, then 15 on the side next to Brinkley, it's a corner lot, sorry, it's a corner road, and then 20 in the back are 20% of the lot depth, whichever's least.
And does each of these structures, as shown on this site map, which is also the storm drainage map, reflect that?
Yes, they do.
And we have another map. It's got the general notes on it.
Right, this is a site and utility plan, C2 of eight sheet binder we've given you guys.
Just walk us through the general requirements and the, and the specifications.
Basically, the general notes say that, you know, the subject property, the street address, the developer, the parcel ID number, the global PIN, recorded reference, parcel area, proposed development. 10.55 acres.
All right, go ahead, please.
And then, proposed development is the three, or 36 two-bedrooms, 24 three-bedrooms that Mr. Alexander mentioned earlier. Lot coverage is 28.45, which is under 30%, which is what you require in your zoning. Parking data, 60 units at one space per bedroom. We have 144 spaces. Total spaces required, we have 144, the total spaces provided is 204. So, we're overparked by 60. So, the zoning is VR, Lanchese Village Residential. The dwellings shall be rented on a long-term basis as defined. I didn't know if you wanted me to read through every one, but, but, uh.
Tell us about the roads.
The roads are constructed of material to have all-weather surface, capable of carrying the imposed weight of fire apparatus, and at least 75,000 pounds, which I said earlier.
Returning back one, well, let's talk about storm drainage, are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir.
Then this seems like a rudimentary question, living at the coast, and I've been flooded four times at my office, but tell us what, what storm drainage is about, what is it?
So, the stormwater collection is mandated by the authority having jurisdiction and the state. Typically, we're using in this, in Dare County unincorporated, a 10-year, 2-hour storm, which is 2.15 inches per hour, which adds up to be 4.3 inches for the storm, design storm, and we carry twice that on this project. So, we're right around 43,000 cubic feet, and I think we're holding in excess of twice that.
And what's the purpose of holding twice that?
Just the factor of safety, just being, you know, generally, we, we try to meet the main guidelines. That's also not letting any of the stormwater leave the property. So, before anything leaves the property or goes into any roadside ditches, it has to get, well, it has to only get to the two-year storm, 10-year, 2-hour storm I mentioned. But we've got twice that amount on this particular property. It just worked out that way with the soil scientists that we had, and we found out what the water table was, designed our stormwater swales, and, and that, that's the volume calculations we came up with.
Mr. House, does Dare County itself has an ordinance controlling drainage, or are we under the state's?
I think this is Dare County's 10-year, 2-hour storm requirement. First inch and a half of rain has to be kept on-site. We ended up keeping nearly 8.6 inches on-site before anything leaves the site.
Tell us about the septic system for this proposed development, please.
Um, the septic system is, is a TS2-type system. It's six, roughly 3,000 gallon per day systems. It's a series of tankage and drain field that pre-treats effluent to a certain level of quality so that it can be distributed in a drain field, a LPP drain field. And those are shown here, 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 and here.
Who, who did you associate, if anyone, to help you design that?
Mike Stidham at Easy Treat is a fellow we worked with for years now on dozens and dozens of projects, so. We have a very good working relationship.
Is this drainage system like the septic system I might have at my house, or is it somewhat more advanced?
It's a little different. The effluent quality coming out of this is a little better irrigation quality effluent coming out of this system. It's called a Treatment Standard 2. The effluent quality coming out of a gravity system has not been treated other than to be anaerobically treated inside of a tank, so there's not any circulation, or any denitrification, or any UV stimulation of the, the bad things.
What's, what's the effect of that?
It makes the quality effluent going into the drain field much, much less hard to take on the water table and environment.
Let's talk about emergency water systems and hydrants, was that designed into this?
Yeah, we got the rule 400-foot as the hose is laid for the fire department, to be able to protect any building. So, we've added fire hydrants, and I'm not, I can't see, that's small, but there's fire hydrants added in a couple of locations. I've got some. Dave, where are they, buddy? Main road, so right here on the main road, you'll see some fire hydrants along this main road.
Mr. House, did you move to the side?
I'm trying to find them before I point them to you, sir.
I got you, I can't see them either.
Yeah. Dave, you wanna come show them to me?
Leave that plain, I'm read.
That's something I haven't keyed in on. I'm on Wharf, and the main road coming in. Where is something?
Hang on.
All right. So, I don't see it on this plan. This is a grading and draining, graded and drainage plan, it's probably on the other plan.
This is 16, which I showed you earlier.
I'm looking for it. I know what they look like, but I do not see it.
All right, we'll have one more shot, here's 17.
That, again, is site and utility plan, that should be where it is. It's not on the landscaping plan, so no, that's not it. I just can't see it, I'm.
Well, let me ask you this, is it your testimony that they are?
They're, they are in there per the, per the requirement, I just can't see them.
Fire extinguisher.
Fire hydrant locations, they're gonna be such that they gotta be 400 feet from the, the edge, edge of any building as the hose is laid down the road for protection. Minimum six for fire hydrants, and I think the, the main, water main at Old Wharf Road is 12-inch diameter that we'll be tapping into.
And if the fire marshal had asked for 10 inches, 8 inches, that would be a problem?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Those are my questions this week.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Do y'all have any questions?
Yes, sir, we're gonna hit you, Virginia Tech man. Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
Has that been considered, or is it even approvable by NC DOT? Because the county, we don't own the first street. For, and, and I'm apologize for a lack of proper terminology, but an approach lane going in to the community, rather than just, you got a two-lane road that can turn it, is that something that would be approved by NC DOT, or something you guys? DOT would recommend something like that on our, in our permit that we get through DOT, yes. Is that something you guys would consider? I think, I think we would consider that. I think. I think it's a good idea from what I've heard tonight. In light of the traffic and what's been said, I think that's critical. If you guys will certainly entertain that. Will do. And look at it, I would ask Mr. Anderson that, and I'm sure he would answer you. I don't, rather than calling back up, we can do that, but.
We will look at that.
You mentioned that the sewage, it's a TS2-type system, and I've looked, looked at those.
Right.
Done some studying on that. Pretty impressive.
They make a good effluent.
I'm told, I'm re, I have read that once it goes through the regular system, then you got pumps that treat, goes, for lack of a better term, I guess, macerates it again.
Recirculates.
Recirculates.
Basically, it drops the solids out and treats, treats the water by recirculation and detention time.
So, in all, am I correct in making a statement that potentially that would, once it's hit the drainage system, it would be a gray water type?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it recommended, just like at my home?
It's an innovative wastewater system that a state has approved.
Right, but no.
And is it recommended for, for areas where you need to save space, it's, it's recommended?
Right.
It's on the expensive side, so.
Right.
If you can get away with a, a lesser, a lesser treatment for a personal home, that I would probably recommend that, but for something that's like this, where we're treating a lot of effluent, it's a great, great way of handling that.
And that's not where I was going with the recommendation.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But that's okay. I, I, I'm glad you said that. I'm fortunately on a, uh, uh, town, uh, system, system now, but for, for 40 years, I had a septic tank.
Yeah.
Where I was going with that is.
It's better on the environment, obviously, a TS2 system.
Is, is there something in the HOA documents that would, you would entertain recommending that the association look at cleaning those on a five-year basis or whatever?
There's an operation and maintenance agreement that you have to have in place that's every six months, I would, I think, four, six months yearly?
Right, because you've got to have an operator.
Yeah, you got to have an operator.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
You got to have an operator that's got to respond within 24 hours, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Want to fix it if it's broke? Well, yeah, well, that's, and fixing it as well, right. Now, I looked at our planning director, and there's a little, um, controversy there, I guess, with the drainage. You talked about the state, um, and, and I, I didn't follow that like I should, so I'm going to ask our planning director to come up again later, so I, so I, I don't know that it's proper to do it right now until my fellow commissioners had had a chance to answer your questions, but I'm going to ask him to come up and address that.
Okay.
In a minute. I believe, uh, I believe that's all I have of you right now.
All right.
Mr. House, but.
Thank you.
Hang tight. We, we ain't finished. Commissioner Couch.
Thank you. Just a clarification, uh, the light goes off, and you got a sewage problem. There's 60 occupied houses, every bedroom's full in there. The light goes off. Am, am I understanding you correctly? They've got 18 hours to get there, diagnose it and fix it? Is that how that works?
24.
It's a 24-hour storage capacity. Its capacity is built into every system. Each system is capable of 3,000 gallons, so you wouldn't have all 60 on one. You would have 10 on one.
Correct.
And you'd have six systems, and I doubt all six would go alarm at one time. So, I think we're 24-hour storage capacity and, and being able to get that taken care of and a, with an operator is a reasonable standard.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. With regard to maintenance, uh, who is responsible for it before and after the HOA takeover of the development?
The septic system?
Yes.
Well, the, the, I don't know exactly. I'm thinking the developer needs to be, and the installer needs to be responsible for it until it's turned over. That in some joint, I guess that would be the installer and the developer, that it would be a contract until a operation and maintenance agreement is put in force through the HOA docs.
So, but, let's take it one at a time, because I'm kind of simple-minded.
I'm sorry.
So, before.
I would say while it's being installed.
Let me ask one question.
I'm sorry.
Before the HOA, who's responsible for it?
The developer.
Okay. After the HOA? The HOA?
The HOA.
Right, okay.
I was going to say developer again, but I thought that might be wrong.
No, that's a, I need to, uh, the, the, so they, they would be calling, they would be contracting the same people each time, right?
Yeah, there's, there's several developers, I think half a dozen or more that, that actually, I mean, not developers, operators that, that maintain these type systems.
Right.
So, they'll, one of those guys or groups would be, um, um, on hire to take care of that 24/7.
Got you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a question that was, that was asked about, um, if one of the systems fails, you've got a 24-hour, uh, lead time. You got a, a capacity of holding.
Capacity of your, your septic tankage, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Now, this, 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 getting back to a perfect storm-type situation and just, I'm asking you a question of somebody that knows nothing about a TS2 system. You get a heavy rainfall. You get that two-inch rainfall you're talking about.
Right.
Does that have any bearing at all on that system's 24-hour capacity?
No, the, the rainfall and the, the septic system itself is a sealed system.
Okay.
So, stormwater won't, will not be infiltrating that.
Got you. Okay. Got you. How long, you, you said they've been around for a long time. How long have these TS2 systems been in use?
TS2, two decades, probably.
Oh, wow.
This, I mean, this particular one, I want to say 15 years, 23 years.
So, you got a great, you got a great history on them.
Yeah, we've done, I know two decades, at least for sure.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
That's something I'm definitely, we've been putting them in. We've done dozens of them.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House?
One thing I would do want to clear the air, because I've heard this from a couple of other people from the Wanches community.
Okay.
You and I are not related, even though we have the same.
We're not. You look like my older brother, but you're not my older brother.
Y'all got the same hair.
Yeah. What's going on here?
We're here too long.
And I am not employed, or do I even reap benefits from house engineering?
None, none whatsoever. Not related.
Couple things. The TS2 system.
Yes, sir.
This is not brand new. They've been around a while.
Yes, sir.
Are there many here on the Outer Banks already?
Absolutely.
Notice the bigger houses on the beach?
Bigger houses on the beach, some restaurants. We just did a, did some startup today down in a small motel right in Kitty Hawk. We've, there, there are dozens, literally dozens, if not hundreds.
Right.
On the beach, working.
Yeah, so like I said, it's not new to the area, and they've, they've been proven.
No.
Also, um, in, you might be familiar with it. In Southern Shores, there is a cluster home there.
That's right, yeah, I know where this is.
There's 40, 40 units on four acres.
That's right.
Now, with their stormwater, uh, in that particular, they do have some swells, but they do have a retention pond.
That's a pond.
Now, I noticed with this system, like you said, you're, you're actually covering like over twice, double, almost triple the amount that you would need.
For stormwater?
For stormwater.
That's right.
But if it were to come to fruition that the numbers were not right on this, is there enough room on this property as it sits to actually have to go back in and dig a retention pond if necessary?
You talking about, we have repair area fields, yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir. We have a, a full repair area fields for this, this particular job.
Right. So, that's why I'm saying if, if the calculations were wrong, we do have it, have an area to go back.
We do, 100% repair area field.
Cool.
Did I say that?
Yeah.
Got you.
And, uh, like I said, you've got, uh, the other question I had, which you've already answered, the two fire hydrants and all that, and those were with, uh, I, I'm sorry, I got confused on a couple of your questions. Was that a 12-inch or an 8-inch line?
It's a 12-inch line on Wharf, I, I believe. That's existing, and it's a 6-inch minimum for fire hydrant.
Right, right.
And we could go to an 8 if needed be.
Yeah.
Um, I think 6 is gracious plenty for, for fire flow.
Yeah.
We will be doing fire flow testing to make sure that we have that, that, uh, proper gallons per minute.
Right.
And that will dictate what we use.
And that would be on a dead-end system, not a loop system, correct?
That's a dead-end system that I, that I can't see right now because of my glasses, but somebody will show it to you shortly.
Yeah. Because that does hamper a little bit too, and, and I'm sure, uh, our Fire Marshal Kovacs has gone over the calculations for that. So, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Commissioner, Commissioner Ross.
Awful lot of talk here about septic systems. I heard public comments saying this will smell like an open sewer. Do you have concerns as an engineer that the system will result in the neighbors smelling an open sewer?
I do not.
Okay, number two. I have, uh, a note saying that the calculations made on stormwater retention and runoff are grossly inaccurate and done incorrectly. Under oath, have you done grossly inaccurate and incorrect calculations?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. I believe Commissioner Couch has another question. Have you missed the house?
Just an observation, uh, just to affirm that, uh, it is a 12-inch line coming down Old Wharf Road and then running down Brinkley. According to Dare County website, it is 6 inches around on Cooper over to Cooper, so you're affirmed.
Okay.
Vice Chairman has a question.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. House.
No problem.
I didn't think about this while, uh, we were talking about HOA versus the developer in terms of, uh, maintenance, uh, for the, for the, uh, TS2 system. Will the HOA have a funding source or a fund of something that they donate to, uh, for the repairs and maintenance?
Typically, there, there would be HOA fees involved, I would assume.
And, and that, okay.
Mr. Odenman, I'll recall Mr. Alexander to deal with that question if you'd like it answered by somebody.
Yes, sir. That'd be fine. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. House.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For your input and your answer.
Question. Mr. Smith, do you have another, um, uh, witness you will call?
Yes, sir.
All right. Before you do that, I'd like to clarify if I can call our planning director up, Mr. Gilliam. Noah, you heard that statement on the, on the drainage issue statewide. Can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, sir. Dare County doesn't have any stormwater requirements in the cluster home ordinance or in the VR ordinance. From my understanding and talking to the engineer that I've been dealing with in the project, which was David Neff, who works for Mr. House with House Engineering, that his design is designed to the North Carolina State Stormwater Requirements. When you just, when you disturb an acre of property, the state has two different sets of permits that you have to go through. One is the North Carolina Sedimentation and Erosion Control Permit. As part of that permit, you're required to get a low-density stormwater permit through the state. Both of those conditions, or both of those permits have been addressed through conditions in the special use permit.
Thank you, Noah. I just wanted to clarify that and so. No, no problem. Thank you.
May I ask one follow-up question?
Pardon?
May I ask?
Oh, absolutely.
The state has to issue these permits, assuming the board issues the special use, right? They will look at it, they will make that determination if it's not.
Yes, sir. The applicant wouldn't be able to break ground or do any type of ground disturbing activity, you know, that, that would remove dirt, moving dirt, pushing dirt, do any of those until they had this permit.
In fact, they would need to get, the developer need to get a bunch of permits before there'd be any ground broken, correct? And have to prove to the state satisfaction that these things have been met. Is that right?
Yes, sir. In, in review of the project, there is three permits that would be outside of the scope of Dare County. One would be the Wetland Field Permit for Army Corps Engineers. The other two would be the North Carolina Sedimentation and Erosion Control Permit issued by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and as part of that would be a North Carolina Stormwater Maintenance Permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Smith. Noah, hold on a minute. We've got a setback question we need to ask you.
Getting, getting back, Noah, to the, to the, uh, thing we were talking about, about how close the houses were together and how close they were on the, on the back ends and the front ends. How about, how about go through those setback ordinances in the, in the county, what the rules are there?
So, this is in the Wanches Village Residential District. The front yard setback's going to be 25 feet measured from the property line. The side yard doesn't butt the corner of Brinkley Drive, that is going to be a 10-foot side yard setback. The side that butts Brinkley, the VR district requires there to be additional five-foot requirement on that for that side of butting Brinkley Drive, so that would be a 15-foot side back. The rear property, the rear property line setback would be, I believe it's 20-foot or 20% not to exceed 20-foot is how it reads in the ordinance.
So, on, just simplify it, on both ends, it's, it's about 20 feet?
Yes, sir. The rear, the rear would be, the rear is centered at 20, it's got, it was 20 NBL.
Right.
The front is centered at 25-foot NBL. Side is centered at 15-foot NBL. The side of butting Brinkley is centered at 15-foot NBL. And the side of butting, as it's labeled here, Mr. Killigworth and the properties in Old Wharf Estates is centered at 10-foot NBL.
And, and that's, that's, so, so, and I think you had mentioned to me in a, in a prior discussion when we were talking about this, that in some places in Dare County, it's as low as 8 feet that the houses should be apart?
Yes, sir. In the R4 Zeta District, which is, um, portions of Collington Island, they have an 8-foot side yard setback for all their residential lots in that development.
So, these setbacks are, are meeting.
So, their, their property line setbacks here are greater than that. The building setbacks per the requirement, or the building separation per the requirements of the cluster home ordinance, um, are 15-foot.
Got you. Thank you, thank you, Noah.
Thank you, Noah. Mr. Smith, before you call your next witness.
Before I release Mr. Gilliam, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought you were finished.
No, I wanted to.
We triggering more questions.
A little paper of the word.
There you go.
Mr. Gilliam, are you familiar with the proposed landscaping around this property?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to show you, if you can come over here and hold the mic, I'll talk from over here. I'm going to show you what I call 17, and it shows the landscaping pose. Does that meet up with what you understand was required or allowed?
So, for clarification, Commissioners, y'all have all these, these sheets in the packet provided by myself. This is sheet C4 of eight out of that packet. The Dare County Cluster Home Ordinance does not require any type of buffer. The applicant showed and proposed a buffer on his site plan, and so as a condition of this special use permit, myself and the planning board thought it appropriate to add a condition to the special use permit that, that made this requirement, and I believe it's in there that reads that he shall leave existing trees and strengthen that with indigenous natural bushes or something to that effect. I don't have the language directly in front of me.
Correct, I'm, I'm reading it.
And I believe on the, again, on the, the bottom property boundary, again, against Mr. Worse's property and the properties of Old Wharf Estates, the applicant proposed a fence there, and that language is again included in the, the special use permit.
Well, the vegetation buffer is item 14 under the, uh, uh, special conditions, uh, listed in our packet.
Yes, sir. And again, that was not a requirement of the ordinance, but the, the applicant had his designer show that on the site plan, so I felt it was appropriate to include that as a condition that that be installed.
Got you. Okay. Mr. Smith, any more questions, Mr. Gilliam?
Yes, sir, but I would like to submit.
Yes, sir. You can submit that. At this time, is there, uh, is there a representative attorney in the audience that represent the citizens of Wanches have any questions to ask of Mr. House?
Who do we have with us before us?
It's Mike Stidham.
Mike Stidham.
Pardon?
Mike Stidham.
Stidham? How do you pronounce, spell that? And Mike, what is your profession?
I'm.
All right. Okay.
I'm going to ask you to speak directly to that and loudly like a maniac.
So, I'm the vice president and co-owner of Easy Treat Incorporated. We manufacture wastewater treatment systems.
Easy Treat?
Easy Treat, yes.
Where is that located?
Our factory is in Catlet, Virginia.
What type of, you've heard Mr. House's testimony?
Yes.
Was he talking about a system you sell?
We manufacture this system. So, the TS2 system is a treatment standard too developed and came into effect in North Carolina July 1st, 2007, under the 1970 rules. So, what it does is it allows, due to the quality of the effluent, we get reductions and allowances for the quality of effluent that we get for this, which allows us to develop these properties where we have vertical separation issues, water and lands, and reductions that we may need from model setbacks and such too.
Slow down a little bit and go back. You said vertical?
Vertical, yes. We get vertical separation. So, instead of for a conventional gravity system, you need to have 30 inches of dry soil, basically, good soil. By using a TS2 system, we can reduce that down to 18 inches and in some cases even 13.
What's the effect of stormwater on these systems?
No effect to the treatment system itself for stormwater.
Why is that?
We're one of the only two systems in the country that passed the NSF 350, which is a reuse quality testing. It's the National Science Foundation. So, there are more credits coming out for a system like ours here, starting January 1st of 2024 with the new rules, the 18E rules, which actually allow us to even reduce and do even more better things than what they're doing on the property. Right now, we're required to have 100% drain field. And, you know, as of January 1st, 2024, in type 1 soils, sandy soils, we won't be required to even have a reserve drain field.
But on this one, you do have a reserve?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And how are these systems maintained or how is this project going to be maintained?
It's maintained by rule. Right now, there are six systems on there, just under 3,000 gallons a day. So, each of those systems will require a maintenance operator. He'll have to make four visits a year and will have to test the system for the quality of effluent twice a year.
And that's required by the state of North Carolina, is that correct?
That's by the state of North Carolina. And the operators have to be certified. They can't just have an operations license. I have to certify that operator, so I have to know that they're doing. I train them personally. So, I work very close with these guys. There's, I think, right now, there's five or six operators in the region from Hatteras all the way up to Corolla. And not anybody's going to be doing this. They've had to demonstrate to me that, you know, it's just like if you had a BMW, you don't want a Chevy mechanic working on your BMW. You got to demonstrate to me that you are doing this. Then the operator is required to turn in these samples and these inspection reports to the local health department, the state health department, and to the owner. So, before we can get an occupancy permit on any of these buildings whatsoever, when we start this system, the contract has to be in place with the county. The county has to have a copy that the contract's in place or they will not issue the OP.
And is there an odor problem with these?
You know, lots of septic systems have odor problems. With our type system, a recirculating media filter, if you have an odor to it, then we know there's a problem. And typically, that's a user issue. It could be something like somebody on chemo that killed the biology in a single-family house, or it could be something happening inside the facility. But when you get an odor, you know that that system's not functioning right. The correction on that is, one, sampling the effluent sample from the septic tank to make sure that nothing's killed the, it's a bacterial system. So, if it kills the bacteria, you're going to have a result for it. But, you know, the worst thing that could possibly happen is you have to pump the septic tank, fill it up with clean water, and restart it. It's not a major issue. We've been doing this for 23 years, as of February, here in the area, here at the beach, even the marketplace over in Southern Shores. There's a 20,000 gallon a day system there. We just installed an 18,000 gallon a day system over at the, it's a Sea Ranch over on the beach road, revitalizing that system. I would say we're probably in a neighborhood of, I would say, between 150 homes roughly here, between Currituck and Hatteras, up and down the beach with systems consisting of single families, major rental properties, subdivisions all over the country. We do RV parks, campgrounds, restaurants, shopping centers, subdivisions. We are the largest manufacturer in North Carolina, throughout the whole state. So, I think we're somewhere in excess. About 60% of this type work it's done is Easy Treat.
All right. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Stifman, am I to assume that this TS2 system is, requires less than the normal one-story beach box house drain field?
If you're looking at a conventional system, you know, septic tank and a leach field, TS2, I get a 40% reduction right off the top of the size of that drain field. If I go out and do what's called a special assessment and hydraulic study over a period of 24 hours, KSATs, and demonstrate that the soil has the ability to move more water than that. Right now, typically here on the beach in type 1 sands, we get about 1.2 gallons per day per square foot for the drain field. But after doing the hydraulic study over here on the beach road, you know, we've got systems that do three, four, five gallons a square foot, you know? But the way everything is, is prescriptive in the rules. It says you can do X, but if you want to go spend the money to prove that you can do more, then you have that opportunity. But the burden becomes the owner's burden to prove that.
I missed this. You said the operator is a certified and these systems are required to be inspected. How often?
Well, for under 3,000 gallons a day, which these systems are, they will require that the operator makes four visits a year.
Gotcha.
For maintenance and operation. And he has to test the effluent twice a year.
Now, when the inspector takes the sample, does he take it from the system or does he take it from the drain field?
Okay, so, he'll take the grab sample out of the pump tank that goes to the drain field. So, most of these systems are under pressure, even though, you know, we're flatlands, you know, water doesn't, we got to pump it anyway. So, I don't know of any gravity system that I have here in the Outer Banks. Everything's under pressure. So, in the pump tank, he'll take a grab sample, the operator will, and he'll bring it down to the lab and have it tested. And we get the results back in about a week or so.
Would you characterize my statement earlier to Mr. House as a factual statement that this drain field, once it's going through this TS2-type system, is equal or better than gray water?
It's not gray water. It's water.
Well, so it's even better?
Yeah. Gray water is not clean.
I know what gray water is.
Yeah. But no, this is reuse quality water. It's water.
Thank you, my friend. Appreciate your testimony. I will ask Commissioner Couch if he has any.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
I must say, Mr. Stidham, that sounds like a very impressive system.
Thank you.
You said something earlier about solids and separation. I guess this gets into the kind of how a system operates. But if you would go into that a little more detail.
Sure.
You said it, the solids separate and then the water goes, goes on that through the system into the drain field.
Basic septic tank 101.
Yep.
We rebranded this thing and call it a septic tank. What it is, is a biological digester. So, every component has a job. The septic tank itself separates your solids and your scum. So, you'll have a scum layer up top of toilet paper, and then you'll have a clarified zone. And the solids will settle out in the bottom, which are typically your organic carbonaceous material. So, there's a filter in that tank that filters down to 1/16 slot that comes down into the clarified zone and draws the water from the clarified zone and moves it over to what we call a recirculation tank. And then at recirculation tank, I'll have pumps in there that'll pump up to the pods, and they're treatment pods, which are basically a synthetic sand filter. And we'll recirculate that about seven to one time ratio. During that process, the bacteria grows on the media. So, it's a surface area equation of how much media you have in there. So, we dose that and feed that bugs that grow in there, keep those healthy. And then it, after it comes out of the pods, it'll go through a device called a bypass valve, which will split the flow 80/20, 80% back to go to recirculation again, and 20% to go over to your pump tank to go to your drain field. And then in that process is where we do the water. I mean.
So, the solids are eventually broken down by the?
Solids stay in the septic tank.
Right.
Stay in the septic tank as a digester. That's why we need to protect those bugs at 12. Those bugs there are deficient in oxygen. So, when we come over to the treatment system, we're introducing the oxygen in the surface area for those bugs. So, it's anaerobic, anaerobic to aerobic condition that you do that does the process.
Okay. So, and then so when the water comes out, you said currently where you are in the project that you're looking at now, you need how much depth?
Well, with the LPP system on this job, it's probably going to be a bed system. But, you know, to your seasonable water table, you know, I'm good at 18 inches. If I use drip irrigation rather than LPP, then I can make it 13 inches instead of 18 for my separation from surface to seasonable.
And do you know how much field is going to be put on this lot?
They're currently finishing up the soils work right now. I don't have that information, sir.
But would you?
Well, if you do a rough measurements, around 15,000 to 18,000 square feet in six fields.
Yeah. What I'm, that's not what I'm, well, maybe I'm not asking this question right. What I'm asking is, when they clear that, cut the trees, clear the land, come back in with field, that field's going to have a certain depth. And what I'm trying to get to is, is that?
It may not have any. We all know.
May not have any, okay.
Yeah, because the soil, the soils study that they're doing right now, the hydraulic study, is going to tell us where that seasonable water table is.
Gotcha.
If I'm more than 18 inches above that seasonable water table, I don't need it.
Gotcha. Okay. That's what I need now. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Commissioner House?
I'm good.
Commissioner Ross?
I heard public comment that there was a serious threat that this development would destroy the aquifer under Roanoke Island. Can you testify under oath that you do not have concerns that the aquifer will be destroyed?
I can testify under oath that my equipment's not going to destroy your aquifer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stifman. Do you have anything else, Mr. Smith? I will ask.
I have two more witnesses.
Well, I know that, but I'm giving the opposition time now if there's a representative in the audience, attorney representing the homeowners of Wyandotte, if they have any questions of Mr. Stifman. Your attorney?
No, I'm not an attorney. I have a question.
Come on. Come on up.
My question is?
Wait a minute. I need you on record, ma'am, if you're coming. You have to be sworn in.
She has to, there's more than that.
Right. And you have to have standing. What are you?
Well, I am a property owner, and I just had a question about the system.
I'm lodging my objection.
You have a problem with that, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, because she, she has to have.
That's right. She has to have standing, and unfortunately, she doesn't. I will ask you. Thank you. Pardon?
We don't know if you have standing without asking her.
Well, she said she was a property owner. That's got to be an objection.
Do you have some direct vacuums or damages as a result of this project?
Right.
Well, I only had a question as to what's going to happen if the power goes out. Yes, ma'am, but, I'm sorry, but the law is, this has to be a different way. If you have standing, you can ask questions.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Mr. Smith, will you bring your next witness, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lewis.
Who are we talking to?
We'll find out once he gets sworn in. State your name and your, who you're with.
My name is Joseph Lee Lewis.
And your profession, Mr. Lewis?
I am a licensed engineer in North Carolina. I specialize in traffic and transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
May I begin, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lewis, would you tell us a little bit about your educational background?
I graduated from NC State in 1993 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, specializing in transportation.
And how, and you are a licensed professional engineer?
I am licensed in North Carolina and Virginia.
And how are you presently employed?
I'm employed with VHB Engineering as a senior project manager, specializing in traffic and transportation planning.
Okay. And what does VHB Engineering NCPC do, basically?
All kinds of engineering, transportation, traffic engineering is one of them. We do structures, roadway design, environmental studies, airports, specialize in bicycle and pedestrian planning as well.
And does it do road traffic studies and road impact, road traffic impact studies?
Yes. In the past 10 years, we performed approximately 200 studies similar to this one.
Okay. And are you familiar with this project that we've been here about tonight?
Yes.
How did you become familiar with it and what were you employed to do, if anything?
We went under contract in mid-February to perform a traffic impact analysis study for the development.
Okay. And how did you do that?
Once we, once we got under contract, we mobilized staff immediately to go out and set up video cameras at three intersections along Old Wharf Road to, for the purpose of gathering traffic data. Once we got the traffic data in, then we got it processed, and we started working on our analysis as well. The original goal was to be here in, I think, in March, but we got postponed to today.
Was this study required with the North Carolina Department of Transportation?
It was not, but we have, we did perform it to their standards, and we submitted to them for any kind of feedback. We haven't received any written feedback yet.
Okay. When you did this, did you use any type of, when you used the cameras, what was the purpose of the cameras?
Well, in the olden days, we would have people sit out in chairs by the roadside and press buttons or even make tick marks on a piece of paper, accounting cards. But now, the new way is actually put video cameras up and actually video, and then we send the video out for processing, post-processing, get the data that way. It's very reliable. It's a preferred standard right now by NC DOT.
And did you, in fact, prepare a written report?
Yes, we did.
And I want to show you what I have marked as plaintiff's 18, or petitioner's 18, which I'm going to hand to Mr. Out.
Thank you.
And if the commissioners would like a couple of copies, I have some extras.
Start this way, sir.
Yeah.
That's what happens when you're down here on the right.
No, no, no. Patterson serves.
Bless your heart. Thank you.
And you and I'll share one.
Sure.
Um, what period of time did you do this traffic analysis?
We gathered traffic data Wednesday and Thursday, February 22nd, 23rd, I believe, for, to have two days of weekday traffic. And also, the following Saturdays, we did counts to have a weekend count as well.
Why did you pick a Wednesday and Thursday during the week?
We typically try to capture days when schools are in session, so we make sure we capture that peak traffic. We only, because we only focus on the peak periods in the AM and PM, so we try to get those. And Saturday, we just pick the highest peak hour. Again, that's standard practice.
I was going to say, does this meet the standard of the North Carolina Department of Transportation?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the speed limit on Old Wharf Road?
It's 35 miles per hour.
And did you come to certain conclusions after analyzing all the data that's in this 100-page-plus report?
Yeah, we concluded that although there is going to be traffic generated by the site, it's not going to be significant levels to create exceptional queuing, which is backing up the traffic at the existing intersections or delays at the existing intersections.
Well, I believe on page 20 of your report, you have your conclusions.
Yes.
Could you just walk us through those because they're way above my pay grade?
Basically, all the intersections that we studied are operating at a really high level of service A and B, which means. of service A and B, which means.
What does that mean?
Which means they have less than 15 seconds of delay on average during the peak hours of study.
Is that a good thing or a bad?
That's a good thing. These are unsignaled intersections, and typically you can even go to level of service E and F and actually be acceptable for an unsignaled intersection, but we're not even approaching that here.
Is it correct that A, for example, would be the best?
A is the best.
All right. Did you come up with any recommendations for the site?
Well, for the site, we analyzed just a single driveway with a single inbound lane and one outbound lane. We did not study any additional improvements at off-site intersections, although I understand there's some discussion now about adding a decal lane going into the site.
And why didn't you propose that?
We tried, we tried to be conservative in our analysis. Look at the, I guess, the least capacity improvements at the intersections just to see what we have to work with. And so we had very good level of services while we didn't recommend adding that additional asphalt to the road.
And I'm pointing here to petitioner's 17, which the road appears the same on all of them. So you're saying your recommendation was one lane in, one lane out?
Yes, based on the traffic volumes.
And did you have any other recommendations at all based on your study?
No, just make sure we have at least one lane, one lane out. And that was it.
For example, were there any concern in traffic density out here? Were there any left turns off of Pugh Road that y'all found on any of the three days that you did this, turning onto Old Warf Road?
No.
And did you determine how much of an increase there would be in traffic volume assuming that 2024 is built, this project is completed in 2024, over what was out there in 2023?
Yeah, we'd anticipate during the weekday AM peak hour, increase of just over 50 vehicles on the front edge of the site. And then weekday PM, about 60. And then the same thing on the Saturday peak, increase of about 60 vehicles along Old Warf Road at the site.
And you mentioned something called LOS?
Level of Service.
Okay, how are those vehicles going to affect the level of service, if at all?
Well, like I said, all the intersections continue to operate at a level of service A and B during all scenarios, so pretty insignificant in terms of operations.
Did you have any other recommendations other than those that we've just discussed?
No.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis, thank you for being here. I'm one of, this is a lot to digest tonight.
Yes, sir.
And I'm certainly, I'm sure we're not going to make any decisions tonight because this is critical to a piece of the testimony that we've heard here tonight. As a novice of reading this, and I don't, I gotta, I gotta look at the, you just presented this to me.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, I don't have a clue what I'm looking at.
And I don't, and I've looked.
And Mr. Lewis has stated that they did studies. Tell me in layman's terms, how many days you did the study? And what time of the day did you do the study? And what were the three locations?
Our three locations are Brinkley, Pugh, and Mills Landing.
All right, let me, let me write that. Brinkley, Pugh, and what?
Mills Landing. Mill Landing, sorry.
All right. How many times did you do it at Brinkley and Pugh and Mills Landing?
We counted all three intersections, two days, a Wednesday and a Thursday, with the hope of being able to get, you know, one good day of traffic data because of weather and other factors. And we understand that on the Wednesday, there was a crash, so we just did not even use Wednesday's data. We just used Thursday's data. And then we did count Saturday. Immediately after Wednesday and Thursday, we discovered an equipment issue, so we went back the following week. So we made two trips down to count on a Saturday.
So two trips on Saturday?
Yeah, but we only used the one good data, one good data set. And we recounted all three intersections on that Saturday to make sure we had consistent data at all three intersections.
Okay. And what were the dates that you did that?
It was February 22nd and 23rd and March 5th, the following Saturday.
In all due respect.
The 4th, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Would you not find that February and March, which I know we've just asked this to be done?
Yes, sir.
This is a hypothetical question, I guess, but I would seem to think that we would have a lot different findings come May, June, July, August, September, in the summer months.
You might, yeah, talking about that, you might. But the timing of the need for the study was now, so.
Well, we weren't, no, we weren't under any, we weren't under, we said this would, this board said, let's do a traffic study. We weren't under any timeline to get it done. I mean, we could have, we could have done this another 30, 60, whatever days. We couldn't? Why couldn't we?
The hearing was scheduled for tonight.
Pardon?
The hearing was scheduled for tonight.
Well, I know, but we could have, we could have had the hearing in May.
Yes, sir.
Or June, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
But the point I'm making is, I got, I gotta shoot holes in this because you did samples of four days. And what was the time, times that samples they were taken?
We counted the morning peak period, which was 6 to 9.
6 to 9.
And then the evening peak, which was 4 to 6, I think? Yeah, 4 to 6.
4 to 6.
And that's pretty typical where we capture the peak periods.
So we did a traffic study, four days, 6 to 9, and 4 to 6. And, and once again, I gotta look at this because I don't know what the numbers are. I, I, you, I'm gonna have to go through this and find out what the total numbers are. But you got that, you did this via video camera. Why would, your conclusion is, based on the numbers, and maybe you can help me out, tell me what the maximum number was in the peak hours, rather than me have to guess and look at this through this report right now.
Found the figures real quick for you. Figure four, I'm sorry, figure four.
What page is that on, huh?
It'd be page eight. It's got the existing weekday and Saturday peak hour volumes displayed.
I can't find it, just give me the number.
So passing in front of the site during the weekday AM peak is about 180 vehicles total.
And that, that's 6 to 9 AM?
Well, that's just the peak hour, so we gave that down to the peak hour.
So is that peak for Bowlin or Pugh or Mills Landing?
That's the, the peak volume in front of the site, just right there in front of the site along the block. Yeah.
All right. So roughly 180 vehicles?
Yes.
At peak?
Yes.
Is that average for the four times, four times you did it?
Oh, that was the absolute peak.
Okay.
Yeah.
180.
For the Thursday count.
Did you say 180 or 188?
180. 180. Well, 94 in one direction, 85 in the other direction.
So it's, it's based on these calculations and your findings, you may have heard me earlier ask Mr. House if they would entertain a turn lane. But based on your calculations, you don't think that's necessary?
Well, the volumes I just quoted to you are the existing counts. If you want to talk about the build volumes, we're talking about, you know, right turn in in the morning would be 12 vehicles approximately. In the afternoon, we take peak would be about 38 vehicles turning in. And then on Saturday peak, about 33 vehicles turning right in. So that's actually a really light volume for that movement, but I understand, you know, that is pretty typical, you put in a decal and right turn lane in that situation.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Lewis, and I appreciate your patience. Yeah, I mean, like I say, I just got this.
I understand.
So I apologize for not being able to understand this, but I gotta look at this a heck of a lot more.
Well, only about a third of us report. The other two-thirds are all the backup data, if you want to look at that.
Gotcha.
It's pretty simple.
Chairman, one question just along the lines you're just talking.
No, you can't. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
You're saying that, if I heard you said that this was, however you rated this at best, the lowest rating, therefore you had very few recommendations. Right now, I don't remember the acronym that you used.
LOS.
LOS.
Lowest service, yes.
So how much more traffic would you need to generate the next level worse?
Well, for an unsignaled intersection, like I said, your, your threshold for, I guess, acceptability is pretty high because a lot of the surface is really only driven by the side street traffic because the main street, they don't have any way.
If we doubled that traffic, what would that do to your recommendation?
We'd have to run that analysis and take a look at that and see. It might change it a little bit, but.
In what way?
Well, then you're talking about the burden is really on the traffic coming, exiting the site, really. Because we assign all the traffic going and coming from the site to the north. We didn't assign any traffic going out, turning right, going south. So again, that's taking a very conservative approach, so the burden would really.
Would that change anything to the sightlines at the intersection to the north or to the south?
The sightlines? We didn't really focus on the sightlines so much. That's going to be something that's decided through discussion with DOT as part of the site driveway permit access. That's still in flux. We did talk to DOT about that, and we know that is a concern, but no, the traffic volumes wouldn't have as much of a factor on the sightlines as you might think. I mean, if you want a sensitivity analysis, we could do something like that to know what, you know, what kind of extra volume would raise us to the next level.
Did you get your answer? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'm going to ask Commissioner Couch if he has any questions.
No, there's been a lot of deep information. I'm good.
The vice chairman's got a question.
Mr. Lewis.
Sir.
You know, this, this study was done in, in February.
Yes, sir.
And early March, let's say. Do you have a factor that you would, would plug in for what we would anticipate the traffic on that road being in the summertime?
For May.
When we have eight times the, the number of residents in, in Dare County coming every week, and a bunch of those folks go to, go to Juanche's for various reasons. Some go to buy seafood, some just ride around sightseeing, that sort of thing. We have a totally different dynamic in the summertime, which again, goes back to the question of do we need a turn-in lane?
I can go back to NC DOT, I asked about a seasonal adjustment factor, and I don't think they said they had that at the time. I can double check again. And we've got some other data that we can, you know, rely on. It's called probe data, you know, use of cell phone signals, things like that to manufacture traffic data. And it's becoming more and more reliable. We could take a look at something like that because you can go back in time and look at particular dates. So we can, you tell us a date, we could probably extract some kind of data. But again, that goes back to, I guess, the density of the cell phone signals in the area. If it's not that dense, then you're not really going to get a lot. But we could take a look at something like that if you really wanted to see it. But I understand your point.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner House?
I'm good. I'm still trying to digest all this.
Commissioner Ross? Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I appreciate it. I will ask if there's a representative in the audience on behalf of the Juanche's residents, if they have any questions of Mr. Lewis.
Bob, I believe I have enough calls to stand before the court.
All right, let's see if you, let's see if you meet the criteria for standing. And tell me what, tell me how you figure you, and I just need to know if you qualify.
I'm trained in accident recovery through a training course called RecMaster. It's actually a certification. I'd like to comment on the, the traffic study that was done.
I would, I'll defer to my attorney to see if you meet the standing requirement.
Do you have an ownership interest in any of the property?
An ownership interest?
I'm reading from the statute.
Statute.
Standing requirements are. To have standing, you have to have an ownership interest in the property. You have to have an option contract to purchase the property. Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have to be the applicant, or you have to be a person who suffers special damages.
I thought it was on the first responder.
That's not one of the, not a part of it. The person who will suffer special damages as a result of the decision, and that's damages to you as a person distinct from.
If I travel that highway with a loaded tractor trailer, it's a second.
If you're, if damages that are distinct from you, from the public. Is the damage to you different than the public at large?
It is because of the type of work that you get done.
Then it'd be your call, Mr. Chairman, if you allow that.
Go ahead.
Okay. So in your study of 180 cars, how many vehicles?
I'm sorry, if you would.
You gotta be sworn in.
Are you going to testify? Are you going to ask questions?
I'm going to ask a question, but I'm going to testify.
And you have to be sworn in.
You gotta be sworn in.
Okay, that's fine.
Go ahead. And, and your objection's noted.
So of the 180 vehicles that were recorded.
Sorry, you gotta give your name.
Say again?
Your name.
My name is Rex Mann. Of the 180 vehicles that were recorded, how many were tractor trailers?
I don't think we really had a big number. You recall a number on that?
The Federal Motor Carrier Administration, Safety Administration says that it takes almost two football fields to stop a loaded tractor trailer.
At what speed?
At normal operating speeds.
What's that?
So let's say it's 55 to 65 miles an hour.
If it's 35.
Well, how many pounds are on it? What is it?
That's what I'm asking you.
Well, at 80,000 pounds, 65, so we can figure they need at least a football field to stop, correct?
On a 35 mile an hour zone?
I would guess, I would say that, that it would take one football field to stop a tractor trailer. If you, if you divide it by two, am I wrong?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to object because I'm obviously not an expert in this area. Asking me a question is.
Divide it by two, 720 divided by two is 360. So you've never stopped a tractor trailer on this corner before?
I will.
I'm just asking if you'll have another study done.
I will, the, the objection is sustained, so on, on Mr. Smith's part, since unfortunately not an expert in that area.
Thank you.
So, but thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lewis, ultimately, if this project is approved as special use, that, special use, the North Carolina Department of Transportation will make these decisions concerning its roads on it?
Yes.
Thank you, that was my question.
All right. Let me ask you this, Mr. Smith, how many more witnesses do you have?
Cars slowly on the stop.
Oh, okay. So you, this is, you have any closing comments?
Not, Chairman, you need to ask if there's anyone.
Well, that's.
You'll close at the end.
All right, well, that's true. You told me the citizens of Juanche's.
If there's anyone that has standing that wants to present evidence under oath.
Well, I've asked that up until this point, and nobody said anything. But if anybody feels like that they have standing, please present yourself and, and we'll see if you do. Anybody, anybody in the audience have standing? If you think you have standing, please present, present yourself. And if you meet the criteria that the county attorney has addressed, come forward, sir, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Joseph T. Willis.
Okay, and what, what do you, do you have, you've heard the county manager what requires standing? Do you have that?
Yes, sir, I did. I believe I do, but I believe it up to the county manager and attorney.
State, state your standing.
My standing is I am the heir to 365 and 383 Old Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah.
Where's that?
Where's that?
It is in Juanche's, North Carolina. It is probably about 300 yards from this proposed site.
And, and as that, then how, do you, are you a person who suffers special damages independent of the public?
No, sir, I am not.
And do you have any ownership interest in the property?
I am the heir to the property.
The heir to this property?
Yeah, the heir to 365 and 383 Old Schoolhouse Road.
The property that's under.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir, I am not.
You don't own that and you don't have a contract to purchase that property?
I do not.
And you don't represent an owner's association on behalf of the community?
I'm speaking on behalf of the community, but.
Are you a part of an incorporated or unincorporated association designated by virtue of owning or leasing the property in the area or an association otherwise organized to protect and foster the interests of a particular neighborhood who also has standing to be here?
I am a person representing the Juanche's Alliance, which I believe is an unincorporated entity.
And are they designed to, what's the purpose of the lines?
I would have to defer to the commanders of that.
Then, then it's not one of the purposes listed here.
You don't have standing, unfortunately, sir.
If that's the case, sir, since I believe I did have standing at the time, I do see a five-minute clock here. If it pleases, I would like to.
It's not open to the pub. This is a quasi-public hearing right now.
That was a public hearing. This is a trial.
This is not a public hearing. This is quasi judicial hearing, so I'm sorry, I can't allow you.
I understand, sir. Thank you very much. Is there an opportunity for me to speak otherwise at some other future date for my five minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where would that be, sir?
Every meeting we have.
Every meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. That would be our May meeting. Mr. Smith, do you have anything else to present?
Is there anyone else, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well, in the audience, yeah. Is anyone else in the audience feel like they have standing? All right, hearing none, Mr. Smith.
Could you explain the definition of the last statute in that pending document? Could you go over that definition one more time?
I'll read it to you with the chairman's permission.
Yes, go ahead.
An incorporated or unincorporated association to which owners or lesses of property in a designated area belong by virtue of their owning or leasing property in that area or an association organized to protect and foster the interest of a particular neighborhood or local area so long as at least one of the members of the association would have standing as an individual to challenge the decision.
Okay, so.
So if you.
He wants to be a member of the Juanche's, what's the actual name of it?
Sure.
Alliance. Is he not outstanding enough to represent that committee?
If, if the purpose of that committee was to organize and protect and foster the interests of a neighborhood, then that committee would require, but then he would have to have standing.
Oh, hang on, hang on.
He would then have to have standing as an individual of that organization have standing. So he would have to be somebody who met those other criteria as well. And that's where it falls apart. This is, this is a trial.
This is a trial.
To put on evidence, not to get opinion.
Evidence is paid by this development, correct?
I don't know. The answer is.
Stand down, please. We'll move forward, county manager. County manager, we're moving forward. You've answered the question. I've asked Mr. Smith if he has any other, anything else to present.
Not to present. Mr. Chairman, I just have a very brief statement.
Okay.
More than, more than 50 years ago, the North Carolina Supreme Court in deciding the issue of special use permits such as the one that we're dealing with here, said that the governmental entity such as yourself is restricted to its own ordinance and that it is not the burden of the petitioner such as area here to persuade, it is just the burden to present. And we have presented overwhelming evidence as to those things that are in your purview. And we've gone beyond that because you had interest, like the traffic study, for example, you had rightly, I suppose, for your constituents' concerns, asked for one, so we've attempted to provide it. But if you look at your statute, what has to be shown is that it is allowable special use, which it is at VR according to your manager, that setbacks are made, that separations of the dwellings are appropriate, that lot coverage is appropriate, that the building height is appropriate, the maximum size is appropriate, the parking is appropriate, and the roads can be serviced by emergency or service vehicles. All of that we have shown and that's what we have to prove. That's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. In light of the time this evening, it's 10:30.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you close the presentation of the evidence formally. And if you're going to come back.
Well, that's where I was going, but go ahead.
And then you all then can either deliberate now or take time to read all this stuff and deliberate and then come back at another meeting.
That's where I was going with this, Mr. Smith. Like I said, in light of the time, it's 10:30. In particular, I've had all my questions answered personally. I'll yield to my fellow commissioners, but this I just got 30 minutes ago.
Yes, sir.
I've not had the chance to digest it. And that's a key piece in my determination with respects to this hearing. So my suggestion to the board is that we close the hearing and that we will, we will take this up at our May 1st meeting and we'll, once again, folks, we will not have it at 9:00 AM in the morning, we'll have it at 5:00 PM. That is my suggestion to this board.
You want to motion, Mr. Chairman?
I do, if you don't mind.
I'll move that we digest this information in the next 30 days or whatever and be prepared to arrive at a decision after we've had an opportunity to check everything out here in these various reports and mirror that information we've been given on, in our first, our May meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Couch has made that motion and it's been seconded by Mr. Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. If the folks here will hang tight, we're going to get out of here. We're not going to stay another minute past 11 o'clock, but we do have consent agenda and we have board appointments. I would like to address some of the public comment at the very end. If the board is, if you folks are willing to hang tight, because I'd like to answer some questions.
No problem.
If that's okay with the board. But we will shut down 11 o'clock, if that's okay. So I will move, I will move county manager, item 11.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, item 11 is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes, you have the tax collector's report, you have the DHHS, Social Services, Adult Protection Services, Essential Services, Funding Budget Amendment, you have building services for the Dare Water Department, you have Xieke's Legal Services for tax collection, you have Public Works bulk fuel purchases, budget amendments for the Virginia Espritlet Community Center, advertised of 2022 tax liens and Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, Trillium Opioid Remediation Program funding.
Much to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your board appointments. You have the aging advisory council for the Alamooral Commission. Brandy Bohannon has retired and Kay West has resigned, leaving no representatives for Dare County. The applications for your consideration are Nancy Beth Moore, Sandy Pace, and Christine Ward.
Pleasure to the board.
I move that Beth Moore and Sandy Pace be appointed to this board.
Motion by Commissioner Ross is a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman and Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is Dare County Board of Adjustments. The terms of Edward Mann Jr. and Anna Kreeff expire this month. They wish to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor to reappoint by Commissioner Couch. Any second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Airport Authority. The authority recommends James R. Kenny be reappointed for a four-year term.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman to reappoint, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Mans Harbor Board. The fogged members have terms that expire this month. Cindy Holder, Lad Davis, Jonathan Oglesby, and Jesse Troy Outlin Jr., they all wish to be reappointed. Troy Outlin Sr. resigned in 2022 and there are no applications for that position.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by the vice chair to reappoint. Any seconded by Commissioner Couch and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those likewise? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Veterans Advisory Council. Robert Pross and Marsha Brown wish to be reappointed for another three-year term.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In your upcoming board and committee appointments, you, in May, you have the Zoning Board of Adjustment for Dare County with two terms expiring. In June, you have the Hatters Community Center Board with three terms expiring, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with 12 terms expiring, the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board with three terms expiring, the Library Board for Dare with three terms expiring, the Ronup Island Community Center Board with six terms expiring, the Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring, and the Waterways Commission with three terms expiring. And then in July, you have the Airport Authority with four terms expiring, the East State Community Center Board with one term expiring, the Game and Wildlife Commission with four terms expiring, and the Juanche's Community Center Board with five terms expiring. That would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. Appreciate that. Before we go into commissioner's business, as a courtesy to the folks here in Juanche's, they've been very patient sitting here all night long and, and they need to, like everybody else, they need to get home. I wanted, and I'll yield to the, my fellow commissioners if they have any response to public comment, but I would like to, I would like to address a couple of things that was addressed to us this evening in public comment. And, and, gosh, I don't know where to start, but I just want to validate something and verify that this, this project is not an essential housing, and I don't like the word affordable. And I changed that four or five years ago when we started talking about housing, essential housing for our, for our workforce and folks. This, this is not a project that the county has pushed with Woda Cooper, who is trying to do some housing for us that is subsidized, as well as, it's not 8A housing, by the way, as, and as well as Coastal, who we've hired to hopefully do a project for us for the monies that we receive from the state, some $35 million. And, and the NIMBYs has shot us, shot us down considerably on everywhere we've gone. This is a separate project. It's been market rate housing from day one, from what I understand, from Mr. Anderson. So I wanted to make that clear. Commissioner Ross made a statement in the, in the questioning of the quasi judicial hearing that we have a smell of a sewage plant around, and that's been certainly answered for those that had that concern tonight. The, pay your employees was another one that was mentioned to us. I mean, come on. Four years ago, we spent four and a half million dollars. This board spent four and a half million dollars for our employees. Last year, we spent another $4 million to meet the market rate for our employees in Dare County. I take total offense to that, making that accusation that this board needs to pay their people. It makes me sick to my stomach when I hear something say, say that, because nobody works any harder than this board on projects to do things for this community. You know, pay our teachers more. What is it, county manager, 38% of our budget?
Yes, $25 million a year.
25 million dollars a year of a 50-some million dollar budget for the schools. Plus, we play, pay an additional $3 million for school resource officers. And we've lobbied, I've been to Raleigh last week, three, three days. The week before, I went three days. The week before that, I went three days with vice chairman and the county manager lobbying our legislators to increase teacher pay. Well, guess what? They're going to give them 10% increase. It ain't nowhere near what it needs to be, but don't tell me we don't do our job and we don't care about the people in Dare. You know, you have a right to say whatever you want, but there's not a board in 100 counties in the state of North Carolina that has done what these gentlemen sitting beside me have done over the years. And trust me, folks, I can throw a lot out there of the stuff that we've done. Who would have thought we'd have had three bridges in the last four or five years? Who would have thought we got $15 million going back and forth to the state legislator, legislators? To do a public-private partnership, to build a dredge so that a lot of you folks can get in and out of the inlet to go to work, to go to work. Well, I know you don't want to hear it, but you're gonna hear it. So don't, so don't tell me, so don't tell me that we don't do our job and we don't work hard. So that's my response to some of the public comment. I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Couch if he's got any comments.
The only thing that, again, my chief concern here is that that stays essential housing because I've seen what the air, if those things get Airbnb'd or verboed, then there will be confrontations and I don't want that for the people and I don't, I don't want that for our friends and family in Juanche's. I don't want that anywhere on the Outer Banks. I don't know what kind of.
I hate to interrupt. You all, if, if you're not going to deliberate on this, you shouldn't have conversations about it until you have your deliberation.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On March 14th, the Community Foundation had their yearly meeting. It was extremely well-attended and a lot of, as Community Foundation does a lot of really good, really good things, they will continue to do that in service of Dare County. Dave Clausen sits on the, on the board and of the Community Foundation and he was there. Dave, thank you. Dare County wouldn't be the same place without Community Foundation. Thank you for the work you do. On March 28th, Roxanna Ballinger and I attended the Veterans Advisory Council and presented to them the Fentanyl Kills Campaign that has recently been initiated. We left literature there and the locks on kits and so forth for the advisory board to distribute as needed among the veterans in Dare County. On March 30th, the Saving Lives Task Force held the Third Annual Faith Summit at St. Andrews by the Sea. It was the best-attended meeting that we've had to bring the faith community into our fight against substance use and to help with mental health issues. Commissioner Bateman was there. He's, he had to step away, as you heard, but Commissioner Bateman was there for that meeting and again, very well-attended. As always, I'd like to say congratulations to our service pin recipients for their 50 years of service and to Crystal, our employee of the month. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House?
Yeah, I'll make this quick. The State Division of Marine Fisheries will be holding a public hearing on five proposed shellfish leases here in Dare County. And those, that public hearing will be here in this room on Wednesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. And the public may attend the meeting in person or online via WebEx. The public may also comment on the proposed shellfish leases in writing. And written comments will be accepted until April 13th via online by, by mailing in comments to the Moorhead City Office. The leases that are being considered, there's two leases for Kinnick Keet Oyster Company off Avon Harbor. There's two leases for Kings Point Oysters off, in Sandy Bay, and also shellfish bottom lease in Bellowsy Creek. Some good news, Odyssey of the Mind, which is a, teaches students how to develop and use their natural creativity. Some good news. Odyssey of the Mind, which is a, teaches students how to develop and use their natural creativity to become problem solvers. Imagine being faced with a problem that requires an original solution. It can be frightening. Now imagine not being able to, not being afraid to solve that problem. That is what Odyssey of the Mind members learn. These skills and self-confidence will carry over in all areas of their lives. OM brings a classroom life as students apply for what they learn and combine their interests and passions to solve our unique, open-ended problems. Now, there are several teams that have competed from the Dare County school system. Three of them actually went to the regionals. I'll take it back. Four went to regionals. Three of them went to state. One of them has now won the opportunity to go to the world finals, which is in Michigan. It's from the First Flight Middle School. Now, to take that up, they've got to fly, hotel rooms, eat, and not only with, you know, the teacher, but also with their coaches and sponsors and chaperones. So, it's looking like about a $25,000 trip for them. And normally, what, what happens is, like last year, Kidoc Elementary was able to win it, and it did a lot of public fundraising. I would like for this board to step up, and if we could, come up with about, I'll, I'll say 10,000 to go towards that 25,000 to get our students to the worlds. I'll make that as a motion.
Is there a second for discussion?
Would you describe that again? I'm serious. Describe that again.
Okay, the Odyssey of the Minds.
Yep.
All right, we've got one team from First Flight Middle School.
And what is it for?
It's, it's, it's.
Is it like science-based stuff or what?
It's problem-solving, and they have had to put a program together where there's a problem, and then they've had to work that problem out. And these judges have judged on what they've done, and they've done the same proposal in regionals, states, and now off to worlds.
Off to the worlds?
Off to the worlds.
Were they going to Brussels or something?
No, no, it's in Michigan. It's at Michigan State University, and what I mean by worlds is not only are they competing against teams from other states across the United States, but also from other countries.
Is this the first time any Dare County school team has ever been represented?
No.
No.
Last year.
How did they pay for it?
By private donations through the communities at large, through businesses, and also through the school board.
Okay.
Also kicked in some.
Okay, so this year, that's changed.
I have approached the school board, and they said they don't think they have the funds this year.
Out of the $70 million budget. I'm not challenging you, Steve. I'm just wondering.
I'm just telling you what.
How they couldn't manage to find this, and why it's now being thrown here tonight at 11 o'clock.
We'll table it, or actually, we won't table it, because by the time our next meeting is, they'll be gone, or they won't go.
Is there, you said it was, their cost was $25,000, as we said. So, would we want to pay what they don't raise not to exceed $10,000?
Fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Can you make the motion to that effect?
Make that motion. Sure.
Is there a second? The Vice Chairman's second. Any, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Commissioner Ross?
No comment tonight.
Thank you, sir. County Manager, do you have anything else this evening?
Real fast, two things. On our Wota Cooper project, Wota Cooper's working with Manio on sewage disposal. They've asked us to write a letter on their behalf to the Manio to authorize a voluntary annexation if they grant the sewage permit. I told them I couldn't write that letter without your approval, but if you all approved, we would send the letter into Manio so they could move that project forward.
Move to approve.
Move. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve, seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
The last thing is, Dave and I have been working on the budget. In the budget, we talked about, we're working on the salary study and the implementation of that salary study. When we approved all that earlier, we approved it across all of our funds. When we start moving the monies around and putting the monies in the right funds, the general fund comes up short. We got the money to cover it, but we wanted your authority to cover whatever the implementation of the salary study is going forward, and then we'll cover it again in the budget process when we get ready to do it. It's probably close to what, 500,000, Dave?
They already authored, I'll set number for you. We found one department where we need more so far, so it won't be much.
So, we just need to move forward and do that implementation.
So, you have a motion to do so?
Yes.
Pleasure.
I'll make that motion. I trust our finance department.
Is there a second?
Second.
About a second by the Vice Chair. Floor is open for discussion.
So, we're just moving funds from one fund to the other fund? I'm trying to understand what you just said, Bobby. I'm not opposing. I'm just understanding.
The answer is, at the time we put the numbers out with you when we approved the implementation.
I remember.
We had multiple funds, and as we go now and are putting the monies in the, if I've got this right, Dave, correct me, in the right accounts, we found that we're short in one of the funds that wasn't included in that process.
Right.
Is that right? And so, we're trying to make sure we've got permission to cover that gap in this one, and then we deal with the whole thing in the budget as we go forward. It'll be covered in the next year's budget.
Okay.
Pleasure of the board. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, County Manager. Public information offer. Ms. Hester, do you have anything this evening?
No, sir.
Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn until May 1.
So, moved.
And let's, so, let's schedule that at 5:00 o'clock.
Thanks. We're going to recess the quasi-judicial hearing.
Yes, correct.
Until May 1, and we're going to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, adjourn the meeting, and then we're going to do that at 5:00 p.m. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.